Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Trent?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Starkweather?
Here.
Thank you all. We have a quorum. Commissioner Starkweather, if you'd lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Emphasize the "all."
That's right. Don't get political.
Thank you.
Aspirational, hmm.
Next on the agenda is Public Communications. The time set aside during our meeting for members of the public to address the commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters may... matters, excuse me, raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the commission and will generally be referred to staff or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. I have no speaker's cards for anyone in Public Communications. Is there anyone here present or Sherri in the waiting room with a raised hand?
No.
Who wishes to speak? Okay. Thank you. Next is consent items. We have one consent item, the minutes of the regular meeting, the Planning Commission for September 21st. Does any commissioner have a refinement to those Hearing none, a motion to approve item one would be in order.
I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Trent. Any discussion? Sherri, call a roll, please, on item one.
Qualisi?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Starkweather?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. We have one site involved in tonight's program. I am there frequently, but I have not spoken to any of the owners of the property. I did have a brief conversation with the architect before the meeting this evening, and I expect he'll explain what we talked about then. Mr. Starkweather?
None. I didn't visit the site either. Although I've been there many times.
Yeah, okay.
Visited the site. No ex parte conversations.
I'm not familiar with the site, and I have no ex parte conversations.
No ex parte and familiar with the site.
Very good. All right. Well, let's move on to a discussion item, number two, then. Review and comment regarding a property owner request for a special overlay zone. Lucas?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director for the City of Ojai. The item for discussion tonight is an SPL overlay for... with the address, it's actually three different sites that's being discussed tonight. This is a city council referral item. The addresses are 807 East Ojai Avenue, 811 East Ojai Avenue, and 801 East Ojai Avenue. I believe 801 is the vacant lot. So just to kind of set the table for the discussion, I see that both the property owner and the architect are here tonight, so they'll go into some more detail on kind of the vision.
Like to hear from them both at their choice, of course.
Sure. The council discussed this matter on June 28th of this year. At that meeting, they referred the matter to the Planning Commission for further review, comments, and then those comments would then be forwarded to the city council for further discussion at a subsequent council meeting. This matter is not on the Planning Commission's work program. This is independent of that. This was a referred item by city council. The subject site was not part of discussion during the housing element when we had those sites inventory meetings back last year. Two of the three, I believe Commissioner Bennett, were you also on the commission back in... when did you start on the commission?
October.
October, okay. So it would have been... you would have been on the heels, basically, of us having that in-depth discussion. So two of the five...
Around July or August, I think, yeah.
Right. Two of the five were on the commission at the time, but really what that was, was a fairly in-depth discussion on the requests that came in. At that time, this site was not part of that request, meaning there were requests that came in through Community Development Department. We reviewed those requests and then brought those forward to this body with analysis that went forward with that. The subject site for discussion tonight is under one ownership, but consists of three separate parcels, which comprise of roughly two acres in size, about 1.97 acres. It's currently zoned C1 with a land use designation of general commercial. From a C1 standpoint, the use chart identifies that residential is not an allowed use within the C1. Our code through the SPL overlay designation allows up to, as an SPL overlay, 20 residential units to the acre. Now, potential units, which is also identified within the housing element, identifies about a 70% max unit anticipation. The... and then that would yield potentially for this site, 27 residential units if all three lots were combined and then merged, and then some sort of development was to take place there.
Otherwise, the request has to be for each parcel separately?
Potentially, but it's all under one ownership, so even through HCD and through state, it typically... you... it typically is looking for sites that are common ownership, that are right next to each other, for those all to be merged together.
Okay.
That's because the housing rules say sites under certain sizes were not eligible for the...
And you have two of those sites.
So to make it eligible, you have to combine them.
Right.
Two of these three are under half an acre.
Yeah, so they would not meet the criteria, but in order to meet it, state law, that particular vision, you have to combine them.
Correct. There's a half acre versus over 10 acres. There's that sweet spot.
Least HCD preference.
It's something we talked about a year ago.
Yeah.
I testified about it.
Jeffrey was certainly a part of that, as part of the record. The 70% rule really speaks to infrastructure that's already on the ground, such as like hardscape, buildings, landscape, really the kind of the built environment in terms of how it's situated, as well as a lot of the times it ends up being also kind of the way in which the lot is configured. If it's an oddly configured lot, you may be looking at reductions in unit just sheerly by the requirements.
Depends how far up you build.
Yeah, the development itself. So from a next steps standpoint for this, I think really what the owner and the architect are looking for is comments from this body, questions, certainly a spirited conversation, and then those comments would then be forwarded to city council and put together in a staff report for future discussion and then consideration. To touch on what Commissioner Starkweather was referring to, if you look in the report itself, it actually highlights circumstances given regarding the procedures, and that's on page three of five. In there, it identifies kind of... I wouldn't call it a hierarchy, but it certainly is typically what you're looking for, the sweet spot for specific sites. So sites not less than half an acre in area. That's typically something that's frowned upon with HCD when you're taking those forward as a request. Sites not more... actually, it should be sites more than 10 acres in area. It says not, but that's incorrect. And then vacant sites zoned for residential development, underutilized sites zoned for residential development and in a higher density or intensity. Number five is actually what this fits within, which is sites not zoned for residential development, but can be redeveloped for residential use via adopted programs, actions, and in this case, overlay designation. And then the last one, which I think is the sixth bullet, sites owned or leased by a city, county, or city and county, and then must be developed in compliance with Surplus Land Act, Article 8. And that's really rounds up the... kind of the menu of what you're looking at.
Lucas, my recollection of reading... I don't have it with me. I should have brought it. The guidelines from HCD...
I have it on.
Oh, I thought I had it on.
Yeah.
The guidelines from HCD had some additional factors that you would look at, like how close it is to other businesses and stuff like...
Transit stops.
Yeah, so...
Transit stops. Yeah, there's other...
Of course, this one would obviously meet all those, but I just pointed that out, that that's an additional positive factor to potentially include it.
Yeah. Let's question staff and then listen to the applicants and then deliberate.
Well, I wasn't deliberate. I was just clarifying whether he agreed with me. Yeah.
In between, yeah.
So I've also got a PowerPoint, but I'm not going to go into that at this point. I've covered kind of the high level. If we want to talk about where the site's located at and the other SPLs that we already have as a part of the housing element, we can go into that as well.
We do, in fact, have SPL overlays on other... otherwise commercial properties...
We do.
On Ojai Avenue.
Yeah, there's one, two...
At least two.
Three...
That I can think of.
There's three.
Oh.
All on the north side.
Counting the bowling alley.
Correct.
That makes three.
Mm-hmm. So anyway, that ends my presentation. I'm certainly available for any questions, and I'm sure there will be lots.
Please.
Oh, so a quick question. If we're looking at the zone change, would it be changed to VMU?
No. What you would be looking at is a two... well, several different applications that would be applied to this. It would be a zone change, a general plan amendment, and a text amendment. The zone change is really to apply the SPL as a hyphenated overlay. And the same thing is true with the land use, is that you've now got to identify it as an SPL overlay for the land use, which is supporting the general plan. In addition to that, you need to make an amendment to the housing element itself to include that as an additional unit.
List a new parcel or set of parcels in the housing element.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then finally is the text amendment, which then is... makes it consistent with 10-2-704, I believe, is the SPL overlay. It already highlights the existing SPL overlays that we have and then documents the development standards that go along with that. We would need to include that with... through a text amendment as well. So it's all of those pieces lined up for something... for someone to move forward independent of the housing element.
We just have that overlay on it. Okay, I got it.
Correct.
And then just for clarity, so currently, we have a regional needs assessment of 53 housing units, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then currently, we have identified 95 housing units within the city with the current SPL.
Correct.
Actually, it was 120 times 70%, which is really 84, not 95.
Right, but the reality is, is HCD only cares about the maximum number, which is the 95. We're always looking at the realistic number or the realized number when it comes down.
120 was the max.
Yeah. Well...
Since it's in the table.
Yeah. That's true.
So this could potentially bring in 27 additional units, bringing the total to 122?
Yes.
Right? Okay. Cool.
And there's always... there's always the thought process with the ones that currently exist, that there's no requirement for each of these sites to then have housing or affordable housing. It provides for a... yeah, a process to go through. So for instance, if one of the sites, like the Miller site on 510 East Ojai, ends up not being... ends up being fully commercialized, well, we lose those units, because when I report back through my... through the city's APR every year, I'll be identifying that that site is no longer one that we can use, because it's been recently developed, hypothetically, obviously.
Like the bowling alley, for example, that's another...
If the bowling alley was to be developed and it was not developed as affordable housing, we would lose that chunk.
Okay.
This commission saw a concept review for that.
Yeah.
Of the additional three overlays that are already existing on Ojai Avenue, are any adjacent to this space?
No. East and west, on the north side of Ojai Ave.
There's two, two right next to the school board property, or maybe...
Chaparral.
The school board property is one of them.
One of them is this...
It is one of them.
One of them is Chaparral and then one right next to it.
One piece has the skate park in it.
Yep.
And just across the creek from it is one, and then the bowling alley is the third one.
Yeah, let me... since we're talking about that, let me just...
There they are.
There we go. Yeah, so you can see here, you have Ojai Avenue here. Here's our subject site here that we're discussing tonight. And then you've got three, one, two, in the yellow or mustard.
Mm-hmm.
And then three. Yeah, so this is... this is one of the sites. It is on Bryant Street.
Is that behind...
Onder storage.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's just to the north.
Easement driveway there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. See that? Cool. Thank you.
And then the smallest one is city-owned, right up here off of Montgomery.
I know there have been suggestions about what to do with that property, but it is clearly less than half an acre. Do you see... do you... would you anticipate HCD ever doing... allowing anything to be done with it?
I think the fact that HCD has allowed for the SPL overlay to remain on that site does, in fact, identify, especially since the unit count has been identified there as well. The other map that I wanted to show was the zoning. I think it's important just to... just for clarification purposes, understand that through the subject site that we're seeing here, to the east and the west and the north, you have C1. To the south, though, it's manufacturing. So you really don't have any residential surrounding it, per se?
I'm on Highland.
Yeah, maybe down... maybe down the east side of Fulton a little bit, but that's all.
Further... yeah, further south and west. But nothing immediate or abutting is really what I'm kind of getting at here.
Good show.
I've got some questions, if I can ask.
Please, go ahead.
Number one, the special housing overlay district, does that include all the provisions that would apply to density and review and everything, or is there other... you wouldn't be doing a conditional use permit. It would be contained within this section?
Correct.
Okay.
So the process for that is... look, there's a host of technical documents that an affordable housing advocate or affordable housing group would have to go through. And providing all that information, it's through a zone clearance, so it's not discretionary, it's ministerial. However, the design review is still baked into the code. So the design review would come before this body, but with the caveat that it can't be subjective design standards. They have to be objective design standards.
Okay. So beyond this design review change due to the Housing Accountability Act, or whatever it's called...
Aha.
Yeah, that bans reducing the number of housing units or denying them based on subjective standards.
Right.
Basically, our design review is all subjective at this point.
The findings are subjective. The only thing that's objective is our development, is our specific development standards, like setbacks, lot coverage...
Yeah, so...
Density. All those are...
So essentially, it would be ministerial as far as the number of units, because we can't deny them.
That's the point of the...
Long as it meets the details of the code.
Correct.
Okay. The other question I had is this... how long ago was this section written? How many years has it been in effect? Has it been changed in the last 10, 20 years?
Which section are you talking about?
Most of Title 10. Special Housing Overlay District. Is that...
So it was a part of the fourth and the fifth cycle. So the fourth cycle was 2000 and...
Six to 13, or there's six to 14.
Six to 13 and 13 to 21. So, yeah, 2006 to 13. And then... but I will preface it with the what we didn't necessarily have in affordable... we didn't have a housing element that was adopted up until... for the fourth cycle, up until about 2011, 2012.
Okay.
And then we piggybacked on to the fifth cycle, which was in 2012, 2013.
So I guess...
The big changes to Title 10 were in 2005.
But we were in good company. A lot of cities just weren't...
Oh, I know. We're in the leader of the bad company. There's no question about that.
I don't know that that's necessarily true. Maybe during the fourth cycle...
I shouldn't say that.
When a lot of other cities weren't necessarily...
My question is, there are standards in here, like environmental review and so forth. Are they still all valid under the Housing Accountability Act?
Yes.
So like CEQA review, if it's under a certain size, generally?
Yeah, it's all a part of the EIR. So the EIR had mitigation that came out of that. And that mitigation identified several technical documents that they had to provide.
I see. So we don't need to change these standards before we review something like this to be in compliance with the Housing Accountability Act?
In terms of changing the standards, in terms of the development standards, this body would be looking at what those standards would then be for the overlay.
That's what I'm talking about, the overlay.
More than likely, staff would bring in some sort of recommendation. We'd talk about why those recommendations are coming forward.
So before...
In terms of setbacks, height, you know, number of stories, setbacks, all those things would be on the table.
Height, setbacks, fire safety, the usual stuff.
So am I wrong? It would make sense to go ahead and start doing that before we get an actual application, so that we're in compliance with the state before we start reviewing it?
The applicant... the applicant is required to come forth with a plan.
Yeah, there's no plan.
I realize that, but our...
The SPL overlay doesn't imply any plan at all, as far as I understand.
Says you can do it.
It's just...
It's not, yeah.
Just let us do a development if we can figure out how to do it.
But it has all kinds of requirements in here, reading this.
Sure.
And I'm saying, if they're not in compliance with the Housing Accountability Act, we shouldn't be applying them to some application that's out of compliance with state law.
If the code is inconsistent with the Housing Accountability Act...
You'd have to update our code to reflect any changes.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying. We probably should do that before we get this thing back.
Well, I don't want to put the cart before the horse, but our next discussion item is going to be talking about...
Oh, okay. Well, that's good.
That specific piece.
Now, the 20... the number there, the 27, that's what would be allowed under our code. Is that correct?
That's the realistic density.
I see.
The reality is, is that it's a realistic density, given the parameters that we're seeing on the ground. However, they could still build up to 39, realistically, beyond the realistic number of 27. So we're thinking 27. If they come in with 39 and they figure out a way to make 39 work on the site, and it meets the objective development standards.
I see.
Like a 35-foot height in the C1 zone.
Right.
Yeah, a two...
Right. Two-story.
You only can go two stories under this...
You could go three in 35 feet, sir.
However, the SPL specifically identifies two stories.
I see.
Now, that would be a discussion that this body would have to have, and that would be something that would be forwarded as a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Okay. Would be part of an overall recommendation that we might make.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I think that's enough for now.
Questions?
I have questions, but I think I'd rather hear.
Okay.
Fair.
Gentlemen? Not yet.
I think I know where Jeffrey's going with this. And a piece of my interest is to make sure we have a set of blocks there that have some coherence with heights, setbacks. And if we're incorporating housing for the... over here, I'd love to look at the issues associated with adding housing to ground floor commercial.
Sorry, can't hear that here.
Put your mic.
Yeah.
Speak to the mic.
I'm sorry, Mr. Miley. I said, I understand where Jeffrey was going with his comments, or I think I did. And this area, there are several blocks here where there are a variety of setbacks and a variety of looks to the streetscape. And if we are going to add housing and a housing overlay, which I would support, and that housing overlay has an implication in terms of the look and feel of the heights and setbacks in that area, I can see why it might be prudent to try and figure out where we're going with all of that first. What is the look we're trying to get? Because right now, it... that... this block and several others in that area are kind of hodgepodgey.
Oh, definitely.
And there's parking out front, and there's buildings with various setbacks, and it might be nice to know where we're going, so we don't just operate with a project as opposed to operating with an overview of what we'd like to see.
So if I can... Maybe an appropriate question would be, is this subject site under the guidance of the East End Design Guidelines, or is it farther east than that?
Hmm, I believe it's still a part of the East End Guidelines, yes.
Okay. So we have some overall guidelines already for design.
From design, yeah.
Another question on that with regarding setbacks and compliance with setbacks and height. Is it aligned with the C1 zone? Is that where the setbacks come in, or is it based on village mixed use or the residential zones?
Um...
Setbacks determined.
To a certain degree, it... so you... if you're using the C1, C1 for the front...
Yeah, overlay on top of that.
Right. Then you're looking at... okay, so for example, the sites that's just east of the Chaparral, that kind of thin site...
Yep.
The northern half is... contains the overlay, really. It's the way it's described. It's really just the northern half for...
North of the skate park?
Yes. That's dedicated for affordable housing. And that's done on purpose, specifically to put the residential where residential is surrounding it. So instead of having it towards the front in this kind of, how do you fit the... and setback that potential second story, so it's not so, you know, not so impending on to Ojai Avenue, that's already been solved with that specific site by putting all of that housing towards the rear of that property.
But back to the rules, the SPL in itself does not have its own set of setbacks and all of that, correct?
Yeah, you can borrow and use and apply.
You go from whatever the base zone was that you put the overlay on.
But you can also identify specific carve-outs to that.
Okay. So there's exceptions.
So I have a page... well, it's 520... 259 or 288 in my copy that I pulled off the code, but it's section... what section is it? Well, it's in the notes at the back of this housing thing. And as under C, it says SPL design standards. The applicant must demonstrate that an affordable housing project is or can be designed to ensure, consistent with the design parameters and development standards set forth in Tables 2, 10, and 2, 11, respectively. Now, they have a chart here. So it seems like... do those design standards, like, take precedence over the East End design standards? Anyway, they have... God, that's not supposed to be doing that. I thought I turned it off.
You may have found another inconsistency in the code.
But anyway, so it lists things like building mass and scale must be integrated with the surrounding problem. You know, they're most kind of subjective, actually, but they refer to things.
Yeah, the thing is, is if it's subjective, I can't...
So we can't even use these design standards, basically?
Have to use standards that have numbers in them.
Correct. It's got to be objective.
Or like a picture or something that shows you what kind of...
A diagram, yes. Those are objective. It's follow this standard.
So it sounds like the C1 is the baseline, and then we can modify that if needed, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Now, in the second part, though, 211 does have setbacks and stuff written in it.
Yep. Table 2-11, SPL development standards.
Yeah, it's got a number of acres.
So it does have its own set.
Yeah, it has setbacks.
And so that trumps the base zoning of wherever the SPL overlay is.
So like, there is one for the C1 underlying zone, and so there setbacks are overriding, blah, blah, blah. I'm not sure I understand that. But anyways, two things there. 10-foot front, 10-foot side, 15-foot rear. There's no site coverage maximums. Floor, there's no... none for that. But if it's under... I'm not sure what those two things... are you reading that?
Well, maybe if there's no standards in Table 211, then you go back to the base zoning.
One on the left says underlying zoning district, C1. The other says overriding SPL development. Zoning District C-one, the other says overriding SPL Development Standards. So which one is it?
Well, if you're, if you're developing under the SPL rules, then they override the underlying baseline.
So there's no floor area, there's no maximum site coverage. Height limit is thirty feet and two stories.
Yep. And the C-one, yeah, if you're looking at the C-one, for instance.
Yeah, variable.
It's identifying thirty-five for the C-one, however, the overlying SPL Development Standards for.
More restrictive.
Yeah, for, for two specific sites. It's calling out the specific sites as well, which is what this would need to do as well. Thirty feet, two stories maximum. It's called out specifically.
And let me add one other little thing I found in here. Exceptions. H. Standards and thresholds set forth in Two, Ten, and Two, Eleven define minimum requirements and may, at the discretion of the decision-making body, which not us, but we can recommend. Oh, is it us?
Well, it's the city council ultimately.
Be modified under density bonus provisions, blah, 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 subject to approval of the Affordable Housing Agreement pursuant, blah, blah, blah. Anyway.
Yeah.
So there are some exceptions.
Well, density bonus is its own beast.
I see.
And it continues to evolve, so.
Okay.
And there you need, you need details on how many extremely low, very low, low, and moderate income.
Yeah.
Limits you're going to put on residents.
This chart here is the kind of thing that we probably should be reviewing before we.
Well, I can, I can tell you that if, if this does end up going forward and we're working on this, that we'll be looking at this very closely.
Yeah. Yeah, this is sort of a pre-concept review.
Yep.
I understand. I just, I like to know what I'm dealing with from the law standpoint.
Any more questions for staff at this point?
I'm good.
Very good. Well, let's hear from the applicant then. The owner or the, or the representative of the owner or both?
Is this three-minute or a real?
No, not for the applicant. That's, that's for public, that's for public comment.
More than three minutes. My name's Nick Oatway. I'm a local architect, and I've been working and talking with Ron Sheets, who's with us, who is the commander for the local American Legion post, four-eight-two. And we've discussed the, the need for housing, affordable housing particularly. And to put, hopefully, in this project, some meat into the word affordable instead of it being sort of out there. And to speak generally about the concept that we developed, I, I've spent a lot of time at the site and keeping in my mind the existing uses and the American Legion site at the back and, and the front pay, the front use for the, was it a hair salon? And help of Ojai. I've thought initially, first of all, and I'm excited about it because it is the opportunity of looking at providing housing that is close enough to the center of town, where people could begin to live. And in the last of ten to fifteen years, and my coffees that I've had downtown, I've asked people just theoretically, if you had a reasonable apartment building or you had an apartment, or you had a reasonable townhouse, would you consider living within a hundred or two-hundred yards of where we are? Whether it was Java Joe's or, or the coffee roaster or wherever. And over the last ten or fifteen years, I haven't run into anybody who wouldn't say, who didn't, I, I didn't run into anybody who said I absolutely wouldn't think about it. In fact, most of the time I've asked, they've told me, they said, well, where do I sign up? Because a lot of people have come from other parts of the country where they've seen quite successfully their own families or people they've known live very happily with a shared car or no car at all. And that's not our experience in Southern California, certainly. But it's worth considering for the future of the city of Ojai. I feel very strongly that not just physically or economically, but socially, this town will become a stronger town by developing affordable housing in a pedestrian environment. And for that reason, I was, I'm looking at, as I mentioned to Steve before the meeting, looking at a reconfigured commercial first floor on the, at the street with a first, a second floor of apartments accessed about, behind, at the rear of the commercial in a pedestrian-like corridor to a, a U-shaped element of first and second floor, possibly townhouse or apartment project with a central core being an open space. You might call it a semi, semi-public green area or park.
Nick, may I interrupt you for one moment? Are you planning on removing any of the buildings currently on-site to make this happen?
That, that is something that is, as I'm trying to say, I'm making this a general statement because I haven't planned anything, twenty feet here, ten feet there. No, I haven't done that yet. I've, it's a little like the project I presented for the school district site six years ago that they never went, did anything with, but it was generally where can, how is the organization going to occur? How are people going to live? The look, we know what it's going to look like. It's going to be like a little Ojai Town addition. But, but it's the life that I'm really concerned about. And I want to see, provide an affordable situation for people who are seniors, people who are young families, people who are single, every kind of age in, in this, as a inspiratory for the way the town can, can be going forward. And so I can't really give you specifics of exactly. But I have said, you know, it'll be second floor, basically, and then where we're going, where you know the site. The site is mostly open. And where we're going back, the second floor would be over space, so there will be parking. Obviously, there will be parking for automobiles. But the whole first floor won't be parking like the way it is now. Some of it will be first and second floor. I did a number of projects when I was living in Northern California for San Jose. And we did a lot of projects where we had, you know, something, a, a variety of solutions. Ojai is just, everything, the scale of everything is, obviously, has to be appropriate with what we're talking about here. I don't mean to be trying to confuse you because I can't give you a picture. I'm used to showing pictures, but that's, we're not at that point yet. We're just trying to get the okay to consider it. And we know that affordability is a real conundrum. It's, but it's something that would be very adult of us all to deal with. Thank you.
Chair, please, can I ask the architect a question related to what Judy, I think, was asking? Fisher, my understanding was that you're not going to boot out the.
Speaker, please.
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, move that clear.
We can't hear you.
Yes, so my question to the architect, and I, I'll disclose, I've walked the, the land, the property extensively with architect Nick Oatway and, my God.
Sheets, right.
Council member, former premier, pro temp, wiring. So yes, my understanding is that he, it's not a project where he's going to be asking the existing tenants, businesses to leave. You know, they're, there's, they're flourishing, many of, I think all of them, as far as I know. There's a karate studio in the back and, and American Legion has events. So none of that will change unless, you know, life, there may be life changes, but that's not the, 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 the plan at the moment. And I, I'll, he can come in, where are you? There you are, and clarify that.
Yeah. That's correct, right?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll try to fit that in during the public comment the next time, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Any questions with questions for the applicant? Yes.
Okay.
I want to clarify that they're not an applicant. It's, they're representing the property. That's not an official application. I just want to clarify that.
They're, they're requesting feedback. They're applying to us for feedback, sort of.
But they're not an official, there's not an application. It's not a miscellaneous project or a DRP.
There's no paper moving yet.
Correct, correct.
So how should we refer to this person?
How about Nick?
A, it was brought before the city council of a some title.
Representative.
Representative.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Representative, Mr. Nick. Um, the, I'm looking back, the, there's currently, I forgot, it was a hundred and something parking spaces? I can't remember the number here.
Just over a hundred.
Yeah. And you mentioned in your little intro, which of course I one-hundred percent agree with, that you want this to be shared, shared car use, less car use, walking and so forth. So I assume you're not intending to keep that large number of parking spaces?
That is true.
Okay.
Some of it would be covered by building, I'm sure.
Okay, well, I just, that, that is your intent, is to try to reduce parking and rely more on walking and bicycles and so forth?
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you thinking about any preference for the members of the organization which owns the property currently?
The main preference would be for veterans. The, the, there would be like, you know, the, the veterans would be the people who. It was a veteran who gifted the property, and that's why it's free and clear. And it's, it's, it, it would be, but it wouldn't be. I, I imagine there would be some veterans, but there will be others as well.
And, and would those veterans be needing affordable housing?
Yeah, they would be veterans who would be, because they, they need it. They're either, what is it? Housing stressed? What's the term?
Well, there are, aren't there housing programs for veterans? And if you apply for them, then they would get preference?
There are, and this would be similar.
Okay.
So would all of the units be affordable?
That's the idea, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's where we're coming from.
Remember that the median, the area median income now is over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifteen, I think.
Household.
And mo, household income, I agree. And the moderate income level goes up to a hundred and twenty percent of that. So you're talking a hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Household income is still in the affordable category.
Yeah, no, there's, yeah, different ranges.
So I know that HUD in financing and other federal financing, probably the state too, they give preference when you try to fill in all the various categories. In other words, the very, very low, under thirty percent, the, the very low, thirty to fifty, the, the low, the fifty to eighty, and then the moderate, eighty to a hundred and twenty. So would, would it be your idea that you have, you know, a sprinkling of each of those, so there'd be some variety?
Is, is that part of the plan yet?
Well, I'm just asking, yeah.
It's, it, we haven't gotten down that far. Let's put it that way.
Yeah, so.
But we obviously will arrive at one point where we're.
I just not, I just wonder what your thought process on that, if you apparently hadn't thought about it yet, but that's fine.
My, my, my initial thought is, I talked about this affordable word being such a tough one. And obviously, as you see, the numbers are wide range.
Affordable is well-defined.
I would like to give the people who genuinely need it to receive the opportunity.
And with Section Eight, you can get a, people with lower incomes can actually qualify for, you know, nicer places.
Government subsidies.
Yes.
So a question about, with, with just the veterans, is it, would it be open to veterans anywhere in, in the state? Or is it only for veterans in Ojai? Or, or is there?
I think it would be probably to get veterans that would be a little beyond Ojai, might be Ventura County.
Because I don't think we can restrict, right?
What?
That's, that's a question for the city attorney that we need to get clarified.
Yeah.
Obviously, it'd be people who want to, or work in Ojai and are veterans or, you know, that's. This is, this is a social discussion that would.
Yeah, yeah.
Require some, some debate or discussion.
We need a legal discussion because we had a suggestion on a case earlier that preference for affordable housing be given to people who work in Ojai. And I believe the city attorney said that was not legal.
I'm not sure about the federal, federal dollars are attached to the project and what restrictions would come with that. So I'm slightly hesitant to opine about restrictions for veterans, whether locally or countywide or whatnot.
And, and would there be state subsidies somehow to, to help with this project?
State definitely has talked about having opportunities for funding even. But, you know, the, the, in, in my visualization, it was to create people whose lives were integrally connected to Ojai. It wasn't somebody who has a law job working in Ventura, who, who wants, who needs an affordable apartment. It was to reduce the use of automobiles to move people around and create a more lively town center.
No, I understand that. I just, I don't know if, that legally we can do that, right?
And, and we're not, and we're not making rulings here at all today.
No, just, yeah.
And we're not making recommendations per se. But to a certain extent, I think we are looking at the legality of putting an overlay on the property, not the intent of the representative once that happens.
Right, exactly. Like if you do, you know, Section Eight or HUD, you're, it's statewide. It's not just.
And you're picking up lots of extra rules that we don't know the details about, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. Another quick question, just when you're thinking of your design. Obviously, we're, we're in a situation with the, you know, climate change, and we've got this drought going on. So if you could look to bring in some green space somehow, or, or moderate, or some sort of like, you know, a moderate building to enable ventilation, so we don't have to spend so much on ACs? Or, or some sort of like, you know, gray water, water collection, or regeneration type of, you know, think of those concepts, please?
Well, yes, I mean, everything and anything you can think of related to environmental sustainability. I think we're all super-conscious as we watch the hurricane fly over Florida. That, it's, I just read, or actually, my wife gave me the example. She said, there's this, what was it? It was a ranch development in Florida that didn't have anything more than a, a few asphalt shingles blown off the roof of these houses, because they had designed the. the entire project to be raised just enough, and they designed the roads to be the rivers. And it's the, and all around them were just destruction everywhere. And this one development, and I bet they have a lot of phone calls. Yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, that's the, that's the thought process, yeah, think about that, yeah, think about...
No, it will be everything and anything related to energy conservation, electrical generation, you know, for, there's, and going forward, there will be more and more ideas and technology to make our lives more sustainable, and that will be part of what we want to share.
Yeah. I have another question, and I think at least in part it's for the city attorney. As we all know, we have three separate parcels here, and as we all know, there's another case that has come before us that involves a lot line adjustment and potentially having structures, and I say only potentially because we don't know, having structures that are split by a lot line. What are the legal implications? Yeah. We have, what we have here, 801 is a rectangular plot, kind of small, 807 is an L-shaped lot around it, and then the third one is a larger L-shaped lot around those two. What if a building is built across two parcels? If you can just generally address what that's all about.
Right. I think the community development director can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe in this situation, none of the buildings transverse or across a lot line, so if the...
At the moment, they don't, no. I'm talking about if there were new affordable housing put on this subject site.
Got it.
Uh, is it, is it going to be something besides looking at setbacks and fire safety and things of that sort, and access, obviously, we still need access for first responders? Are we going to have other rules that we have to look at that have to do with building across parcel lines of adjacent parcels?
Not if we eliminate them.
If you just consolidate.
That's not what we have right now, that's why I'm asking.
To do lot line adjustments, yeah, part of it.
Uh, so what, what's the general parameters of that kind of a thing?
The general, yeah, the general answer, the thousand-foot view, is that, yes, those are things we would be considering, or the planning commission would be considering. I would presume that it would be, that if an applicant would try to build, you go the lot merger route, so that all this would be a single parcel, which might address some of the concerns, I think, that Chair has.
That, that would address my concerns, certainly.
Right, as opposed to taking this from three or four lots to two.
One could also build on one of the parcels and not the other two, and avoid the same problem, because I haven't seen anything in the code right now that says you can't build across parcel lines.
No, I don't see anything either.
In fact, it's been done in the past, as we know from a previous case.
Right. But it does make things messy.
Makes it hard when you try to sell it.
Very, yes, exactly.
Okay.
That'd be brutal.
Okay, so that's one more, one more potential set of constraints.
But that could be something that the applicant could apply for, is a lot line adjustment as part of the package, right?
Or, or a reverse subdivision, or, I don't know what you even call it.
Isn't it called reversion to acreage, where you won't have the same ownership and you just eliminate the property lines?
Make one parcel number out of it all.
And it becomes one big piece, which in this case is about 300 feet square.
Yeah, okay.
I, I think it would be useful, at least to hear from my able cohort, Bill Miley, who has discussed, has some paperwork, did we hand out, did we hand out?
Sent to us.
There was an email sent to us, and I have Mr. Miley...
Unless you want to...
I have a card from Mr. Miley for item three, but not for item two.
Oh, okay.
I thought this was item two, three?
It's two.
It's two. Oh, all right, so you're, you're on deck right now for item two then, sir.
Item two.
Did you just testify?
Anyway, I want to thank you for listening.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
And you can see that some of our concerns, oh, excuse me, Mr. Miley.
I thought you called me up.
I thought we were going to have the commander speak. Is that, is that not the case?
No, he asked for Mr. Miley.
Oh, he did, he asked for Mr. Miley.
Well, we've got, we've got a public comment card for Mr. Miley, his turn will come.
Good evening, my name's Ron Sheets, I'm the commander for Post 482 on the subject's property, and really, what we was looking at, I mean, what I'm looking at right now was the concept of whether we can do that, whether the city would approve or even consider a housing project on that property. The property needs, I'm going to say, some repairs or something like that, a lot of the stuff with the parking lot and stuff like that, you can't do it because of the cost of asphalt and stuff like that. 10 years ago, I had an estimate that just to do the asphalt on it was 110,000, 120,000, so, you know, today's numbers, that probably almost doubled that. So can't really do anything without having the overall general plan, and this is where I'm, I'm looking at, Nick came over, met him, and he suggested something like the housing unit above our buildings, or, and has a concept of it. So it's just something for us to consider and see if the, if the council would be willing to look at the zoning for our property, knowing that right now it's just commercial, and do we have any leeway, and so how much? So that's, that's pretty much where I'm at now.
Okay, well, I'm sure Nick is, is familiar with the parts of the code that deal with both commercial development standards and SPL development standards. So he's, he's a good, good piece of advice for you there. The question before us is feedback to the representatives, is this something that if they came back with a concept review, would it not be rejected out of hand? Is that a fair way to state what we're looking at today? And I, for one, would not reject it out of hand, but...
That's a good deal.
Excuse me, I'm deliberating.
Yes. I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions for the commander, yeah.
In the document that was sent to us this afternoon on page one, it said two state laws we're aware of, that were just signed, SB 6, expanding residential into C1 zones. Could you elaborate on that? Are we running into any kind of problem putting residences into a C1? Do you know what I'm talking about? Or the answer is simply no?
No, we're not, no.
Okay.
It's not through an SPL overlay. That's, that is the mechanism.
That's the purpose.
Yes.
I can also just chime in there that since we don't have a proposal in front of us, and SB 6 hasn't gone into effect yet, and the, my general understanding is that the intent of SB 6 is to expand residential into commercial zones, so...
To encourage?
To encour, right, to encourage, this is one of the pro-housing bills, meant to encourage housing at, you know, all different kinds of sites and at all different kinds of volumes.
My understanding was SB 6, you've got to be near transit zone, it's restricted.
High-quality transit hub.
Yeah, I don't think we are even qualified for SB 6, because we don't have a transit, it has to like run, have two buses and run every 15 minutes, so we don't have a transit zone.
Crowley doesn't qualify, Route 16 doesn't qualify.
Yeah, no, we should try to get that bill amended, or get a local bill that would do it, or we can just pass it as our own rule.
Or we have, we know what the rules are right now, and under, under those, the city doesn't qualify.
Yeah, we don't qualify SB 6.
Do you have any more questions for me?
The question really wasn't for Ron.
We're debilitating.
No.
Deliberating.
It was for the planner.
Yeah.
We're getting off.
Well, thank you for listening.
All of your names were on the document.
Yes, I know.
Just saying.
Did you have any information about the condition of the soils in there? And I'm just asking that question, there were 21 gas stations in Ojai at one point in time, and...
There were 21 gas stations?
There were 21 gas stations in Ojai.
Was one of them there?
Was one of them there, I'm just wondering, do you have, because we were, we've been involved in another project where there was a difference of opinion over which maps to be looking at and reading and whether they...
In relation to the soils underneath the asphalt?
Yes.
Obviously, we would be going through some borings to find out what, what we did have there before it was all a parking lot.
So no projects that you've considered previously have gotten to the stage of examining the records as to what has been there and whether there might be leakage, tanks?
The only one was the restaurant project across the street, we did have a couple of borings done for that in the back of what was a little office building, which we were turning into a little restaurant.
That's the Hakani Sushi.
And we didn't find anything like, you know, like the contamination that you might expect.
No underground fuel tanks or oil or anything, okay?
No, no.
That's, that's a question far into the future.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We've dispensed with questions for the representatives. Any others? All right, let's go to public comment then, we'll open, this isn't a public hearing, but we'll open public comment. All right? And first up is Mr. Wierich.
Mr. Miley was on deck.
I've got a counsel.
His card came in after yours, sir.
There's a great website called, and thanks for, for listening to all this, but I think it's important to keep the focus here. The question is only whether the work can be, is, are you gonna, is the work going to be allowed to do all of these details, to answer these questions? This is simply whether we're going to allow a framework for mixed commercial residential development, that's it. There's no specifics implied, other than what's in the code. It's asking, will this planning commission recommend a framework for what I would consider well-described by a website that always inspires me called Strong Towns, which is a detailed research element that talks about how a strong town is mixed income classes, is mixed uses, is artful and appropriate design infill, and this site is, I think, a perfect strong town site. It has all the characteristics. It is close to services, I mean, West Ridge East is across the street. You have easy walk, easy distance into the central core. Yes, we don't have a major transit system, but you're also walking distance from transit options. You have pedestrian, bicycle, easy options to design into this type of development, and you also have walk-to-work options, you know, both in the central core and into the manufacturing plan development section. So it has all of the potential, and I think the question that council was, was asking you to consider is, will you, what do you think about allowing this framework, where we look at a, I think, the best site in town that we have for a strong towns type of infill development, that combines commercial, some of which could be services for the people that are living there, and jobs for the people that are living there potentially as well, to allow this kind of mixed development that is, I think, almost completely consistent with the type of development that is associated with the concept of sustainability. It's a perfect site for that. And this is only an ask, an ask of the owner of the property, that by the way, I'm over time, is free and clear by a public service-minded owner, in terms of no debt service, et cetera, low basis. I mean, it checks all the boxes for a major contribution to our city's development in a way that addresses workforce housing, but does it in a way that's absolutely front and center with sustainability, and I ask you to please recommend to the council that we do the overlay and let the design details then be, let them be motivated to come up with those. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. A question for, for staff and the city attorney. Does anything that we do tonight constitute a formal recommendation to the city council? Because we don't even have a concept review on the property yet.
Right.
Much less a design review or, or some kind of a decision on SPL overlay.
Right.
On what we're supposed to render tonight.
So think about it from the framework, the wire framework of comments received, and those comments are identifying support, that is still a comment, right? If that, if you're identifying concerns, be specific about what those concerns are. If there's specific development components that are baked into the code currently that you find positive or concerning, identify those as well. I agree, if we're, if we're focusing on what the project could be, I think we're already losing. We're looking at the site just as a, as a site, and how those, those development standards potentially are baked into what we're looking at.
I don't think we've ever had a pre-concept review before.
This is highly unusual, but we're still here tonight having that discussion, and certainly council's looking for comments that will, that obviously staff will forward on.
Right, okay, very good. Next up, Bill Miley.
Good evening, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. I'm going to talk about the need, which we sent you in digital form, and I'm asking Lucas to pass out the document to each of you, right? Did you do that?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead. The need in Ojai, and it's all based on the charts in the housing element that you guys developed, the council approved, and is at the state. So I'm not making any of this up. The need is hu, is huge. There are 1,000 households in Ojai that are cost-burdened right now. They were that way when the report was developed, and the rents have gone up even more. So this helps solve it, but 39, 27 certainly doesn't do the job. Okay, so the charts that we picked out frame the request and detail the need. I want to start specifically by quoting paragraph 16 in the administrative report that Lucas prepared, and it's the bottom line in paragraph 16, and it says, "The production of affordable housing requires financial subsidies," which we all know, and they don't have yet, and in most cases, in most cases, "and the level of need is far greater than the available So I'm going to go over the charts really quickly, by number, and I'm going to state it for the public, as well as restate it for your commission. One, please turn to page two. Cycle six, state housing element assigned an RHNA of 53, but you know, 21 of those were market rate, which, in my opinion, it's not, you don't really, it was 32 affordable houses that the city of Ojai has to zone in order to be developed over eight years. That's almost, in my opinion, immoral. It's unjust, there's no justice there, okay? You know, if you look at chart six, it says that there are close, there are over 1,000 people who are cost-burdened. You know what percentage that 32 is? These are 1,000 households that live, that are resident here. I'm not going to look at... I'm not gonna look at the color. It's 3% of the need in Ojai, these 32 are. Okay. Two, 80 use appear to be the predominant construction type that we've been doing. The American Legion overlay would be single and family-oriented. Three, low-income housing needs are great and have not been met yet. Look at the chart. Extremely low is in the last six years. Well, it says 2014 to '21. Okay, yeah. Extremely low zero, very low zero, low zero. We haven't been doing it. The need is great. Four, current SPL overlay sites in cycle six housing elements are limited. Number five, the site map of the current SPL overlays, the American Legion sites fits well into this matrix. It's about 700 feet west of Whispering Oaks, which has 101 units. The three parcels would be lot line adjusted to almost two acres. Six, look at the chart, income distribution. I added up the first three. There are 1,065 households in our city with incomes at or below low-income affordable levels. You almost cry when you think about that. I do. Seven, there are... This is the housing problems by race and ethnicity, but it speaks to the issue of cost burden. That's the burden. That's the problem. There are 1,365 households in the city of Ojai paying over 30% of their annual income for a roof. The data came from 2017, the American Census, and that's four or five years ago. It's probably much higher than now. Number eight, cost burden by tenure, rent, owner occupied? And I added these up. There are 715 renter households. Remember now, we have about 3,300 households, 300 of which are vacant. There are 715 renter households that are cost-burdened in the extreme low to low affordable income categories. They're probably... Discretionary income probably isn't even a question for them. Nine, 230 households either lack... Get this. Either lack complete kitchens or plumbing. God, my God. In Ojai? And the last one, well, almost the last one. This has to do with housing age. Of all the city resident housing structures, almost 64% are older than 50 years, and some of them are older than I am. And that's kinda old. I looked at Santa Paula, they have somewhere around 45%. We have one of the oldest housing matrix kids in the county. And my house was built in 1960, so that means it's 60 years old. Eleven. This gets into fair housing. And it emphasizes the percent of lower income burden and cooperative actions. And in the first chart, just the first line I wanna read, 40% of Ojai households earn 80% or less of the county's median income. And the chart at the bottom, in the left column, it says, "Substandard housing conditions." The two of them are age, which I just spoke about, and then the issue of cost of repairs and rehabilitation, which the city has done nothing about in the last six or eight years, as I'm aware of. And then on the right-hand side, I checked, "Continue to work..." This is the mesh... This is the mission for the city. "Continue to work with the Housing Authority of Ventura County and nonprofit organizations to preserve and expand the city's affordable housing inventory through rehabilitation housing covenants." And number 12, and I am finishing my need statement. Whoops. Okay, there's another chart about fair housing. Substandard housing conditions, 11% of renter households lack kitchen and plumbing, 5% plumbing. I already said that. 64% of the housing elements are 50 years or older. I already said that. Second, the last 40 to 60% are overpaying. And the last one overcrowding, which really surprises me, only 14 renter-occupied households are overcrowded. I would think that would be bigger, but okay. And the last.
Thank you.
I'm not finished.
Temperature, like, three times past your time.
Well, there's only... There'll be here. So in this table, it has the issue of summary matrix, table D12, of fair housing assets and actions. The issue is, what is the city gonna do? Under identified fair housing issue, place strategies to encourage community revitalization. Under contributing factors, second one, location and type of affordable housing. And then, under city action at the bottom, it says, "As part of the general plan update and municipal code, expand housing opportunities in additional areas by designating new sites as SPL." And if you turn to the last page, under the same 12, it says, "What's the idea of protecting existing residents from displacement?" Under contributing factors at the end, it says, "Available affordable housing availability," which we don't have, and that's why the Mallory people couldn't go anyplace. And then, the city action, the last two, which speak to what we're asking, "Continue to work with developers and support subsidized housing development specifically on SPL overlay sites." And the last also says, "Promote affordable housing development throughout the city and promote the SPL overlay to property owners and developers."
All right. Suzha Francina?
Good evening. I'm gonna take a deep breath. So thank you, Bill Miley, for continually bringing to the attention of the council and the commissioners and the public that we are truly in a housing crisis. And that's why we decided to see how we could get this moving a little bit more quickly. So I really came here tonight to just express my support for the SPL overlay and for architect Nick Otway's plans for the project. I've known him for decades. He was writing about sustainable development long before that word became popular. You can research him in old issues of the Ojai Valley News. I think he wrote a letter in 1968, you know, about walkability and bike riding. He's an old, longtime Ojai resident. He probably helped fight the freeway, maybe. Anyway, we go way back. So I am very confident that his project will be a model of a truly sustainable housing, mixed-use project. It will be green. It will not be a project where you see 100 cars in the front, you know, with all asphalt. He'll make sure that it has green space and the kind of things that were... And trees for shade. He's so environmentally sensitive. I'm confident that his project will be a model environmental project. I mean, I went, I think it was back in May, because it was already hot, council member Bill Wirick and his wife Cynthia and Nick, we spent at least an hour walking the property around Sunset. And you could see, as you faced the mountains, what a beautiful view the residents would have. They would see... They would have a million-dollar view of the Pink Moment. I mean, it would... It's such an idyllic spot for this type of development. And then we walked the perimeter, and there are the houses... It's either North Fulton or Bald. The backyards are huge. A lot of them have some... There's... It's a... There wouldn't be any impact of a residential development on the neighboring street. I could see that. And also, the issue of the gas stations, that's something that will be discussed in the future, but the gas station was on the corner where the... What's the name of the street? I know it by heart. Bryan Street. That's where the gas station was. To best my knowledge, I don't recall... Go ahead and correct me.
Well, there was a gas station where Clough Park is now.
Oh, yeah, I know. I was the mayor then.
Lots of others.
I dedicated that park. Yeah, I'm aware of it. Yeah. But I'm saying, there's many, been many gas stations. I'm just saying, as far as I know, there's no issue with that on this current property, but there is the adjacent, where there's a yoga studio now on that property. I just think it's absolutely wonderful that Commander Ronald Sheets is willing to dedicate this to a low, a truly affordable, lower-income housing, because, you know, the town is filled with people, you know, buying up properties for investment purposes, and they don't have... He's altruistic, and I'm very, very grateful that you're doing this. Thank you.
All right. Sherry, do we have anyone in the waiting room with a hand raised to speak on item two?
No.
Okay. Anyone else here present who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and deliberate as a commission. And I'm not sure what we're supposed to come back with, other than comments to the representatives. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's kind of the framework for tonight's kind of exercise.
The real question is here, is the commission supportive or not supportive of an SPL overlay understanding that any plan that may come forward, any concept review or design permit request, would have to be considered separately on its own merits? So, Mr. Trent?
I mean, I'm a big proponent of, you know, new urbanism, you know, the idea of village mixed use, the idea of, you know, a people-centric design versus kind of the car-centric design of traditional urban planning. So I like the idea. I like the idea of looking at our commercial space and seeing how we might be able to repurpose it, especially underutilized commercial spaces, particularly with a parking lot of 103 spaces. That is probably a little bit overkill, I would say. I don't know if we need that many cars, parking lot spaces in that area. So I think that, yeah, this would be a prime location for something like this. One thing I did wanna kind of caution... Well, one thing I want us to look at is the body and is the commission. I mean, I think our general plan does a really good job of outlining kind of new urbanism, you know, mixed use, walkable spaces, you know, bikes, less cars, and all of that. All of that is wonderful. However, our code does not represent that. Our code is a little archaic, a little traditional, and I think we need to really get in the weeds and redesign and redevelop our code, because it will never get to the place that we wanna get to with the current code that we have. There's just too many limitations. People wanna do projects, and then we throw this old code on it, and they blow up. So anyway, that's just a suggestion. Also, one other thing is I think the affordable housing thing is obviously a very hot topic with the city or with our community. And I just wanted to remind everybody that it's not just an Ojai problem. I mean, it's something that's much larger than our little community. But I think we do need to do the best we can, but I think people need to understand, we can't solve all the world's problems in our little town. We've got, you know, it's a big issue. Obviously, the state of California is well aware of it, and I think the country in general is aware of it. It's... We haven't had the building in the past in the United States like we've had before. So, anyway, with that said, I just wanna remind people that it's not just an Ojai problem, but we do need to do our part.
Thank you. Mr. Bennett?
You know, there's that expression, "I know it when I see it." And I see here a project which, in my mind, so naturally fits the economic landscape and the needs of the community. There's an opportunity to clean up an area of town.
Commissioner Bennett, if I could ask you to speak into the microphone?
Right.
And Sherry, if you could turn the volume up just slightly in here, so that it's... So that everybody that's in the audience can hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Gee, I hate to repeat my best lines. I said, "I know it's... I know it when I see it."
Say I'm better the second time.
And this is a, this is a, I think, a great concept of extending the main street of town into mixed use where there is residential over commercial. And I say that loosely, because some of the residential may be on the ground floor in a project like this. But I love the idea of having a project where people can walk to the conveniences that our town has. And, you know, there's gonna be, you know, some work to be done to get all the things lined up to make it happen, but this is, in my mind, this is perfection. And I think, you know, Bill really nailed it. And, you know, it's funny, in Bill Miley's document, it said, "In bold, heavy bold, the production of affordable housing requires financial subsidies." Well, guess what? The land's free. That's a financial subsidy. This is unbelievable. This is, you know, if we don't, if we don't find a way to have this happen, we're not gonna have anything happen. In most instances, you have to pencil in a cost of the land into the development project. So I'm, again, I'm excited that we might do something that will be attractive, set the standard for this area of town, provide good housing for people who want to be able to walk across the street to West Ridge and buy their food, and I just, I think it's terrific.
Thank you.
I've been involved in this community in trying to create affordable housing for several years. It has not been a successful effort. I think that this particular project could actually work, and I want to thank Mr. Sheets for his generosity to making our town finally able to make a positive step forward in this arena. I am certainly completely supportive, and I think that that would be a lovely place to have a mixture of commercial and residential properties. I like what Suzha said, because I have a view of the Pink Moment, and I cherish it every day. So if these housing units have that, it'll be a real pleasure for those residents. So I'm supportive, totally.
Mr. Starkweather?
I'm totally supportive of the concept and getting more affordable housing in our downtown area in mixed use. I agree completely with what Mr. Trent said about in commercial use. I would slightly disagree with one thing he said, which is, it's a problem all over the state. It is, but LA Times had an article just yesterday talking about the state is making progress. Ojai has made no progress. And we have a group of people that say no to every affordable housing project we have. We have, as leaders, gotta step it up and point out the benefits to our community and, you know, vote these things in. We can't be afraid of fears and misinformation and stuff that is given out there about affordable housing. I would point out that there was... I would point out that there was a recent study by the schools about enrollment. And in that study, they were looking at the projections for enrollment. And the one that was taking us down to pretty much disappearing our school system would be continued on the road path we're on now. Twenty-two years without a single multifamily development in the city of Ojai. You cannot get low and very low income without multifamily, small unit developments. So I think this is a great idea. And secondly, I agree with Mr. Bennett, on the issue, we needed to look at this. And I think we have an opportunity now because this one section here, section 10 to 704, which is the housing overlay, is something, if we're going to have housing, we need to update that thing and get it flexible and usable. I don't see why we should not make that an immediate priority. We're going to have a project. We could have others and really dig into this section and make it work and not have barriers. I would add that, um, I think, well, this may be down the road, but we have a 55, the state has a 55 year deed restricted, but we're allowed to go longer than that. And we should because in North Carolina, it was always 99 years, which means it's permanent. And I think it should be 99 years personally to that. We all know that that's, that's going to stay affordable housing. We have the authority as a city to do that. And, um, I think I had one other thing. Maybe not. Oh, okay. As an attorney, civil rights attorney, I have had a little bit of experience dealing with discrimination on housing. And basically, you, you cannot discriminate against somebody because they're not, they don't live here. And if you think of all the categories that are protected, age, disability, various statuses, if you started, I mean, you would have lawsuits out the wazoo if we started saying, oh, you have to be from here.
Right.
Of course, it goes, runs right up against the Commerce Clause of the U.S. Constitution. You know, California was famous, Do Re Mi. You know, they were charging people for coming to California during the, during the Great Depression. That was illegal. This whole idea that somehow we're going to pick and choose who comes here. Now, there are ways that make it more likely it would be local if they're smaller units, if you have, if you're mostly advertising locally, you know, if you are, have an office that's, you know, getting people, there, there are ways of doing it. But we can't be, this whole idea, I keep hearing it, we're going to pick who comes to Ojai and who doesn't. We cannot do that. And we shouldn't even be thinking about it.
Right.
I mean, it's kind of like, you know, who came to America? You know? I mean, the Statue of Liberty, you know, after, uh, you know, we finally passed a law to open up immigrants from all over the world rather than just from certain kind of Europeans. And there are people that would like us to go back to some notion of only a certain type of people, white people from Europe, which I happen to be one, but I don't like that. So I think that I'm really, really, uh, really important to me morally and, and otherwise that we, we not even be thinking of those kind of terms about restricting who could come in and who could get our places. But yes, we want to do the best we can in how we structure these so that they're mainly for local people. You know, if, if you limit the size, who is going to come here and come into a, you know, 800 square foot place to retire with money? They aren't going to do it. They're looking for, you know, the fancy big house. So there's ways we can structure this so that it's, it's geared towards the workers we have, the incomes they make and so forth. So that's, I'll leave it at that. But I am in favor of it. I think we should say, we want this special housing overlay zone to be applied here if it's works. And we should be working in the meantime to make sure that this section is going to work, not just for Mr. Otway, but others as well. Sorry for the rant, but it's an emotional subject with me.
That's good.
I, I would like to remind the, the members of the commission that we're not here when we were doing the housing element last year, uh, that we did put together vision and goals for the housing element. And one of the things that was included was more flexible zoning in the commercial zone. I recall a few years ago now that we had an applicant and someone's, maybe it was Mr. Otway, said this is the best place, the best possible place to do this kind of demonstration. We had a group come before us that wanted to develop an acre that is about 100 yards west of, of this particular site on the southeast corner of Bold, of Bald and Ojai Avenue. It's one acre. It's vacant. They wanted to put in a cafe, a deli, a business office, maybe a real estate office and a number of residences. And we told them it looked like a terrific project, but it was going to require some rezoning. And that would have to go through the Planning Commission and the City Council. We weren't trying to discourage them. We were encouraging them to go ahead with this. But the rules as they stood, and we didn't know about SPL at the time, I think. I don't remember exactly when that came along. But they walked away. And I don't, I don't want to see anyone else walk away. I think this is the kind of development that we need. It's, it's classic small town America to have mixed retail and residential in the heart of your town. My mother-in-law grew up in a suburb of Boston. Her father had a plumbing store and the family lived on the second floor above the plumbing store. Worked very well for everyone. And I would love to see more of that here. And you're, Mr. Starkweather is absolutely right. We cannot discriminate. The law cannot discriminate against people based on where they work or where they want to live. But I submit that if we have 800 square foot apartments or townhouses or 1,000 square foot, whatever, that are, that are geared to lower income families, we are not going to attract lower income families whose jobs are in Oxnard and Camarillo. We're going to attract people who want to live close to where they work. And so we don't have to discriminate to help the situation here in Ojai. Just let people put together what they can afford to put together. And that's obviously, um, a cautionary tale for the representatives. It is a wonderful thing that the land is already there. I don't know what everybody else's tax statement looks like, but the land that I live on is worth more than a house that I live in.
That's the state.
Um, but you still.
That's probably true with most of them.
You still have to put together, sirs, as Mr. Otway knows for sure, you have to be able to put together a plan that says so many of this income level and that income level and market rate, if that's what it takes, in order to cover the costs of building, any building that you want people to live in. But that's your problem. And the city's challenge is to make it possible for you to have that problem. And I am in favor of giving you that problem to work out. So is there, is there anything else that anyone wishes to say? Anything else that staff you think we need? Are we going to go to a concept review and then a DRP and, and, and all of that on this? Or?
That's not how this SPL overlay would work. It would be, it would likely be a zone change, general plan amendment, text amendment that you would be seeing.
Okay.
And mind you.
We have to have someone ask for it first.
Correct.
We haven't had that yet.
We've got to have the ask. It's got to come back to council for consideration, deliberation, then.
Well, it comes to us first, right?
Well, I'm talking about, hold on, hold on.
With a request for an SPL.
I'm talking, hold on, hold on.
I'm sorry.
I'm talking about simply the, the comments that were received tonight, the straw poll of support that I'm hearing from all of the commissioners. That information is sent forward. That's the first step. This, this council has asked for comments, has sent it to this, this body. Those comments have been received. We'll put that together in a staff report and then the council will then have an opportunity to deliberate and then provide, um, direction further. And that is at the will of obviously the council. So it's from a processing standpoint, that's the next step. Now hypothetically, let's say council says, go for it. And whatever that ends up looking like, this body would definitely be seeing a zone change, general plan amendment, text amendment. Concept review potentially. However, I caution that because the way in which these developments work for the SPL overlay, it's a zone clearance and then a DRP. And the DRP cannot use subjective standards. It has to be objective standards. So it, it really carves out a lot of the standards that we have already baked into here. Technical documents, those are objective. I'm sorry. Yes, objective. So it's meeting.
Hands with numbers in them.
Hands with numbers in them. Exactly. So those still work. I've already had the conversation with legal. So that's, that's kind of where we stand right now in terms of the next step, council and then from there.
The precipitating event at this point, we have given feedback to people who came to ask a question.
Yep.
But the precipitating event now to put something in front of council, I think, is to have someone ask for a zone change and overlay.
From that, from that standpoint, that would then trigger applications and for, and formal process.
That would start the formal process.
Yes. And a project essentially.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. Uh, well then, on behalf of the commission, I would ask Mr. Sheets and Mr. Otway, do you feel that you have gotten sufficient feedback from the commission to proceed with whatever you want to do next?
I don't feel comfortable, at least in my understanding of, of the structure that Lucas has alluded to. Without an SPL overlay, we really have nothing.
Correct.
We have nothing. And, and without getting an SPL overlay this evening, I'm not going to do anything.
Okay, well, you have not, you have not formally asked for an SPL overlay.
Well, that was the, that was the whole reason for this meeting in my mind. And without an SPL overlay, we're not talking about anything.
I agree.
I, I, I mean, you need to give us an SPL overlay tonight. Affirmative. Yes, go. Then I feel comfortable going to Ron and his board with a concept and a plan and elevations, street elevations, et cetera. But without an SPL overlay, I have, I have nothing.
So isn't this a zoning change?
The first, the first thing I think that you need to understand is that we, as a planning commission, cannot give you an SPL overlay.
Okay, does that come from the city council then?
That is, that is a city council action.
Okay.
Because it changes the zoning on that piece of property.
Right.
Came to us and, at, at least from what I see in the written record here.
Okay, so I didn't understand.
Came to us and said, what do you think? And what we think is, it's a good idea. But you have to formally apply for a zoning change.
And the zoning change, am I right? Lucas comes before this body in a public hearing. So there would be two.
That's right. There's a public hearing before the planning commission and one before the city council in order to get.
Zoning changes are illegal.
Yeah, I just, I just, it'll take me two, maybe a half a minute here. Uh, our letter to James Vega was, it is our request that the city of Ojai grant our East Ojai Avenue properties, as the three properties described above, any and all expansion of our existing zoning classification to allow us to provide a mix of uses over the subject site to include in the very, at the very least, a variety of affordable housing along with commercial uses. We understand an appropriate zone overlay for the mixed use we seek is called a special overlay zone. We are requesting that this special SPL zone be attached to this property. Please direct specific questions regarding this physical improvements we want to accomplish here to our design and planning representative, which is me.
Yep.
So I've tried to describe that this evening. But, but I misunderstood my own, uh, I get lost in some of the descriptions of how things happen. But, uh, so it's the city council that actually.
The city council will ultimately grant the zone change.
All you really have is the taking, uh, our picture of what we want to do and you're either for it or against it.
No, we have to, zoning is a legal process that requires an application. We have to look at.
No, no, I know the zoning.
Comes before this body first. And we have a public hearing and we make a recommendation to change the zone.
But it starts at the city council giving us the special overlay over commercial to even consider housing, right?
Not my understanding, but maybe here our attorney.
Does anybody understand it?
The zone change comes here and then it goes to city council.
I already explained it to this, to this commission. This commission is very well aware of what that process looks like. Nick or Nicholas, I believe, in this case, what we're looking at here is they're taking comments. Staff will be putting together a staff report that'll be going back to city council. City council will be having the deliberation on that. If council is supportive of it, then you, you start the formal process of a zone change, general plan amendment, text amendment.
Now, you, you said those three things, but you didn't say special overlay.
Within that are the special overlay as a hyphenated, um, piece attached to both the C1 zone for the zoning map and the CM zone or land use designation for the general plan. So in terms of receiving an overlay, it still requires a formal process. This is an informal process where you've made the ask. Council has had that discussion and they reverted it back to this, to this body for discussion and deliberation. They can't take action on this because it hasn't gone through the formal process. That formal process requires public hearing, ordinances, um, highly technical documents that have to be vetted through both this body and city council.
So is the next meeting where this particular site is considered at any level, it's to receive from your commission, the city council, uh, comments going to the city council?
Correct. That's the next step is it would be going to city council.
Uh, well, this is a question I can probably ask you and.
I mean, we could talk about this more line in term, offline in terms of the process moving forward.
Yeah.
I don't necessarily want to deliberate the, or belabor the, the conversation at this point, but yes.
Well.
I already heard.
But this is, this is my secret weapon here, Bill Miley. He really does have an incredible handle on, on everything. And we all have our expertises, right? No, what we want is a recommendation for a very positive recommendation.
Which I believe we have.
Everybody.
This body.
Getting unanimous.
That there's more than at least, there's many reasons why this is a good thing to do. That's all, I guess.
And, and.
I think all five of us stated that.
Individually agree with you on that. We have a formal process for doing zoning changes and we have not started that yet.
Yes. Oh, no, I understand that. I've, I've been actually through those before. Okay. Suzie?
May I have, well, to ask permission, Chair Lucy here to speak on this to clear it up so that our architect goes home with confidence?
Okay. So, uh, two, two things and I'll, I'll ask the city attorney and Lucas, I have a question. Make sure.
You need, you need not to prejudice your decision outside a formal public hearing.
Okay. Well, we did ask the city attorney if we could speak on this and my understanding is that we can. I'll be careful how I word, how I word this, okay? So the first thing is on Tuesday night, when we, when, when we go around the council members on future agenda items, I was going to, um, give a synopsis of what transpired tonight and that it was unanimous that we should grant an SPL overlay. I can, I feel that I can say that. But then now I have a question. Is it? Is it possible at this with, I mean, I think that's what has to happen next, that this be placed on, on an, and I wanted to ask for a time certain, even though uh we're in a transition with the council and all of that. But we can, you know, we'll work with that. But my other question is, is, is it more, what's the word, can they expedite this? Or is it more clear if uh the members of this body make a motion, a formal motion to recommend that, that, that you haven't just, you know, made these comments, but can you make the comments into a formal motion as a recommendation to the city council? Is that a clear question?
Is that appropriate?
So there's two, there's two paths that I'm seeing here. One is for this to come back to this, to the city council as, as an action, as a supportive action by, by this body, by the, by the planning commission. The other is simply for the property owner to submit the applications in thrice that I had mentioned earlier. The zone change, the general plan amendment and the text amendment. They could, they could apply for that tomorrow.
Okay.
And start the process if they wanted to.
Yeah.
So that would be the faster way to go rather than waiting for the city council to-
However, this process started with council. And it started with a letter that came from this group asking for consideration and it was brought forward by two council members. That's the whole, that's where this all started, right?
Yeah, yes.
So, but there are two options. Comes back to city council or they apply tomorrow. That's, that's really the, the two options that we're looking for, looking at here.
I thought you-
And right now, count, this body, this commission has provided, uh certainly it feels like it's 5-0, um support for this. I think you're seeing that support, um enthusiasm from, from this body.
But can that support, is there, um is, would it be better if they made that support into a motion of support? Does it make a difference?
I, you know, be my recommendation that we encourage a developer to proceed because uh-
Just cut in here for, for a moment. Uh I, I don't think to answer the question that it substantively makes a difference whether there's a motion or not in how the community development director notes it in tonight's meeting. I, I would note that if the, yeah, uh there was talk about, you know, moving it to a date certain, that's not something the community development department, sorry, not something the planning commission can do, mess with the city council's agenda.
Yes, yes, that's what I had in mind.
Right, that, that's something for the city council and city staff to decide. It's not something for, for planning commission to decide about what goes on the city council uh agenda when.
Understand that, yeah.
So I just wanted, I wanted to clear that up.
This group cannot initiate-
Right.
Code changes or general plan changes that we haven't been asked by the city council to execute.
Correct.
But an applicant can request a zoning change without going to the city and it comes, that starts the process and then we would-
Right, I, I think the-
Something to vote on.
I, I think the, the public has, uh at least hopefully, I think the, the Legion and its representatives have, have got a good understanding of what their options are. Um and, and we can call them up just to confirm that if that's something the planning, or chair and planning commission would like to do.
I, I think Mr. Oatway said he understands the formal process.
Right.
So.
I believe I heard that as well.
I think that should suffice.
Plenty of attorneys in town.
May I just have one more clarification so that I'm clear? Tuesday night, Nick, uh Nick Oatway can do those things tomorrow morning, but that doesn't change what I can do Tuesday night.
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
That doesn't change what he does either.
City council members are free to speak during city council meetings at any time, I think.
Well, I, I can only speak to this, it's not on the agenda. I have to wait till the end of the meeting.
All right. Let us, let us move on then to item number three.
Thank you for presentation.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Someone that does housing for a living.
I suspect that the SPL-
I say.
Just hoping you could just-
Oh my goodness.
All right.
Okay.
All right, we will move on to item three. Housing element programs and progress report, Lucas.
Loving the enthusiasm, let's carry that forward, shall we? Okay, so um-
Yell at anybody tonight, but I was tempted.
I could tell your frustration, but that's okay, right? We're all enthused, we certainly want to make sure that the process is understood and it's clear and it's not clear as mud, but clear as water, right?
Don't have to like the process, we just have to follow it.
And respect it, I think, to a certain degree. I agree with that. Okay, so the next item up for discussion is the housing element programs and progress report. So the housing element itself um includes several programs, nineteen in total. This body last year voted to recommend to city council, um not necessarily all the members here, but this body, this, this planning commission made that recommendation, um I believe it was back in July of last year. And city council then adopted-
You submitted a draft report to HCD in July, yes.
Yes, I did, okay, that was, okay, thank you. Um and then city council adopted the housing element in October of twenty twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
And so that was, that's since been forwarded on, we're working through the certification. I think we're really close, um and working at revisions to that. In the meantime, there are several items that we've got to start working on. Staff has to start working on and in some cases, planning commission will be a part of either a recommendation or providing input um on some of these programs and specific pieces within these programs. Now that I have an, an advanced planner on staff, we're starting to work at, work through some of those pieces and keeping track of that. With this staff report, there are attachments. One of those is a task list and, and this is highlighting some of those, some of those um items, either that are low hanging fruit, kind of in the mid-range or things that need to be accomplished within the next eight years. They're not necessarily giving a timeframe. And I think it's important that we take a moment to reflect on those items and the progress that's going on with some of those. Cause I think it's, it's critical to understand that, um like I was talking about earlier, we as a city are required to report back to HCD through our how, um, or through our APR, our annual progress report. And that's done through the housing element, it's a required piece and then also through um progress through just our general plan overall. Within that is not only the numbers or the development that's taken place. A lot of times we're identifying ADUs that have been developed over the last year. It's also looking at progress reports to itemized pieces within our programs that we're looking at, working on and that we've committed to, either within the near term, the midterm or the long term, within that eight-year span. So that's, that's what we're, not looking for any action tonight, it's really more of a discussion uh and Q and A at this point. And just understand that more than likely throughout the years and, and potentially either quarterly or every six months, we'll be checking in. Cause not only are we doing that through city council, through the, um, the annual progress report, but I, I think it's important for this body to understand that we're doing the good work um behind the scenes as well. And you'll see that reflected in items that are becoming for um this body in the, in the near future. Density bonus is, is likely to be one of them. ADU modifications through state that are, that either have or are going to be coming through the pipelines in the near future. Certainly this body's seen it, three years ago, I think is the last um ADU amendments that we've seen from an ordinance standpoint. It's not going to end there. The state continues to look at ways to-
The columns to that table in seventeen oh nine.
Yeah.
Deals with ADUs.
Exactly. It's those types of, of measures, making sure that we're, we remain compliant with state law, so. I wanted to just note, in terms of the Excel spreadsheet, the kind of layout here and the format, I want to give Alex some credit here. He's the one that put together this, this information and kind of put it all into perspective. And I like the idea that we're looking at a percentage for completeness. I think I want to draw our attention first to that. Any of those percentages that you're seeing there are progress. I mean, the ten percent is identifying that, yes, we're at the beginning, but we're at the beginning of the discussion in terms of how we address and implement um some of these programs and tasks that are being identified. The colors at the top, um in terms of website additions, code amendments, procedural uh development, each of those have very specific parameters. Either they're being handled internally by staff and it's just being um something that we have an obligation to take care of within a, a certain timeline or it's something that is going to be before this body as a recommendation to city council or it's something that uh needs to come to this body for, for comment or, or further information. So just recognize that in certain circumstances, you're not going to see this. You've already voted on it or you've provided a recommendation. In other circumstances, um certainly you're going to be seeing the fruits of that labor essentially.
Have we voted on any of these um procedure developments?
You have voted on, you voted on the programs themselves, the detail that goes into that, no.
Yeah, I realize you voted on the, on the goals and what, what we're going to be doing, but uh, so the, like a developer program to monitor ADU construction or mo- these monitoring things is, you're going to come back with how we're going to be doing that as a city.
I think it's likely that this body will end up seeing some, cause it's a, it's a policy decision, but it's also something that's going to be fa- that front and face, front and center on our website.
And staff resources too, cause if you're talking about monitoring things, you know, what, what are you going to get priorities?
Look, what I've, what I've come to realize with, and this is something that the state is to a certain degree requiring when you are, for instance, doing ADUs as an example. The state's not coming back and saying, hey, city and city staff, can you do less? They're saying, hey, how can you do more? And I think that just can, you're going to continue to see that through assembly bills, state bills uh and even these, these programs that you're seeing here over the next eight years. And that's, that's part of the, that's part of the process. It's also part of the reason why um it's important to recognize that this, this is long range planning and not project driven. So there's not necessarily the same timeline per se from a um uh, from a state standard. Our timeline has already been baked into the housing element in terms of how it operates. So we've got to make sure we're staying within that. Cause if we're not, and I report back to HCD that this program was supposed to be on, done on such and such date, but guess what, we didn't get to it. That's going to be a mark against the city and certainly against uh the community development department, against this, this commission. So we've got to make sure that we're staying on top of this, which is the reason why we brought this forward for discussion.
Um can I ask a question?
Sure.
Oh, cool, so uh-
Well, it's the chair that would-
Go ahead, I have, I have three questions of my own, but-
Okay.
I cover them before I get to it.
Oh, that's all right. Um I just noticed that uh nine of these are due in the next couple of months and then three are due in like three months and I just wanted to make sure that this due date is accurate.
So for the, for the website stuff, the due date is accurate.
Okay.
Um the January first of twenty twenty-three, that's really, really when we're going to start working on it. It's not due till the end of twenty twenty-three.
Oh, the, okay, so that would be like-
Right, that's when we anticipate starting work on it.
Or December, okay, so I got you. So these due dates are not necessarily set in stone.
Uh with the exception of the ones in terms of the, the staff policy pieces, those are.
Those are.
We've committed to doing that by the end of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Which is somewhat odd. Council has adopted the housing element, but we still don't have a certified housing element. So it's, we're still obligated to, to follow these, these rules until we've received um official certification. Cause once we have official certification from HCD, if it's twenty twenty-two and it's twenty twenty-three, they're going to be saying, why wasn't it done in twenty twenty-two?
Right, but like for this one, just example, amend ADU ordinance to comply with state law. Due date twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-two, is that?
That's not necessarily, that's when we're going to start the process.
Oh, start, okay.
That's when we're going to start the process.
So that's a start date, not a-
Start date, not a due date.
Yeah.
Does it say end date?
Says due date.
Due.
Due date, yeah.
I wouldn't say that that's necessarily true.
Yeah, probably should change that wording.
I was just confused, thank you.
Yeah, due usually means you're due with the final product. So we don't have a due date, we just have start dates.
No, we don't. I think it's, like I was saying before, the website additions, those are by the end of this year.
Yeah, cause I was going to say, man, you guys got a lot of work to do in the next couple of months, that's brutal.
So can we give a sense?
It would be odd for, for all these programs we've front loaded with in the first two years.
Mr. Chair, I've got, I have a question.
One more, one more.
When John's finished, then we'll take yours.
Um the, the two at the top, develop procedures to monitor, develop vacant, underutilized sites, develop program to monitor ADU construction. Is that just like developing some sort of a database that you guys can just keep track of? I mean, doesn't seem-
We already have a building official.
Yeah.
And, and we have code compliance people.
Yeah.
That uh-
I think we'd have that already.
I mean, I did a remodel on my house and I had in, I had a city inspector out frequently. And I would think that process would continue. I'm not sure how these things are different.
Yeah, I, I guess.
So let's just take, for instance, the first task, which states, develop procedures to monitor development of vacant and underutilized sites and the sites inventory. So there are a number of sites that have been identified through our inventory that are either vacant or underutilized. So essentially it's creating a, creating a list.
For a database.
And then a database essentially, and then checking in on that database periodically. So that's really, there'd be procedures and process, probably a one-page, one pager to help inform that process and policy.
Okay, cool.
Pretty straightforward, but the reality is, is that it, it takes a think tank to think through that and then to start putting, you know, pencil to paper, or in this case, it would be-
There's got to be something on paper for sure at the end of that.
Yeah, you've got to get credit, it's like math, right? You got to show your work. And here, we've got to show our work, especially if we're taking um and providing updates to HCD.
And HCD wants to see it on the website, they want to see how we're monitoring it, how we're updating it.
They are the big brother, big sister right now, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
More so than they used to be.
Transparency, that's what they want.
Well, I think it's action more than it is transparency at this point, like, yeah.
Well, but it's still all, and this is a, this is a que- I'll get to a question. It's still all process stuff. It's not how many, okay, we've identified that there are thirty-four potential sites. There's nowhere in here is a measurement, how are we doing against those thirty-four potential sites in terms of looking at them?
But there cannot be a measure like that because the law only requires that the city provide the flexibility in zoning and, and so on to make it possible. If someone wants to do it, to build affordable housing on any given site, the city's not required to build any. No other individual or group is required to build any. The city is required to make it possible.
Yeah.
And so how do you count progress against make it possible?
Well, can I comment on that?
Then that, then that is the, the answer to my question and the answer is, yes, it's all about process stuff. It's not about substance in terms of-
It's not about actually building affordable housing, no.
About how many units have we built against-
That's right.
Well, we will evaluate on that, but anyway.
Making it possible to build affordable housing, not building affordable housing, yeah.
It's removing barriers, I think is probably the easiest way to, to describe that.
Well, and incentives and assistance.
Incentives, I think, is a bonus.
Of, of-
Commissioner Murphy, please.
Developing um uh comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive evaluation of the development standards, that sounds like some work to be done. And wouldn't we get involved in that?
We would.
We probably would, yeah.
I'll, I'll have more to say about that.
Yep, it's the reason why it's, it's blue versus, yeah.
Do you have more that you'd like to ask or comment at the moment?
No.
Okay, Mr. Starkweather.
He does.
Okay, um the way this is organized, if I understand it, you've got A, B, C, D, and then you've got the numbers and they're, the ones that follow the programs are within the, trying to carry out that goal, is that correct?
Right, so yeah, for the, like for instance, for the first one, it says program one. And that is, that is the first program.
Okay.
Um within the housing element.
Now, I hate to even ask this question, but I will anyway. Are we restricted to what's programs we've already identified? I'll just give it an example, just to throw out some- I'll just give it an example, just to throw out something. Housing impediments. One of the biggest housing impediments is parking requirements. But there's nothing in here about parking. So are we allowed as active planning commissioners to read this over and like make suggestions about programs that you don't have in here? Is that, or are we just, have you restricted it? You've already got your workload and we can't even address that?
There is not.
Any two city council members can ask that a particular issue be put on the agenda. I think any two planning commissioners can ask that something be put on a future agenda.
Related to the housing element and the programs themselves? I think so.
I don't think any commissioner could ask and see whether or not other people agree to it.
Well, I'll ask the city attorney to clarify, but I.
It's certainly something that can be put on the agenda. I would just note that the housing element is very delicate process and we're nearing the end. And it might make sense to consider removing some of the, dealing with issues about parking, which I know is being also dealt with at the, at the city council level, but maybe after the city has got its housing element certified, so.
Well, this is not certification. This is carrying out when it gets certified. That's completely a different process. It's how we're going to actually carry it out once it gets certified. So it's almost certified. Now we got this one or two-year period, what, I don't know what it is, but.
It's an eight-year period in terms of.
Eight-year period, to, to carry it out and removing impediments, incentives, how we're going to do it. So anyway, can, can we, well, I'll do it anyway, but I'd make suggestions that, that some things that are, that are not here that would be serious impediments, we ought to consider. And I would say one other thing to Mr., the Chair. The state law doesn't require us to do things, it doesn't prohibit us. So we can have objective standards if we wanted. You know, we can have objectives we're working towards that are actual, you know, numbers. I'm just, I'm not saying we will, but I'm saying we're not restricted. What they say is all they're requiring of us is to have a certain number of arena numbers and to actually eliminate the types of barriers and set aside land that would make it possible.
The city doesn't set aside land.
I'm not saying set aside land. I'm saying you could have objectives.
City is required to make it possible.
That's true, but we could still have objectives.
Party to decide to do it.
Yeah. But we're going to be, we're ultimately going to be judged on the numbers.
I think every city is going to be judged on the numbers.
Yeah, and they, and the article in, in the LA Times the other day was talking about how in this round, the California Attorney General and HCD are going to be very aggressive in towns that don't make actual progress towards getting their numbers.
But what does, what does that mean, progress?
That you're actually, well, if we had three housing developments in a row that seemed like they would be suitable, and we turned them down, you know, and we came up with various excuses for it. You know, or we didn't change, we didn't get rid of barriers to make it possible, you know. You know, we had some super high requirement for parking or something and it just wasn't feasible for a, a self-help housing. That's, the state would look at that and say, hey, this place is trying to stop. It happened with SB 9, actually. When some cities put some ridiculous requirements on SB 9, they got threatened with lawsuits immediately. And most of them had the back away from it. So yeah, it is, you know, we have to be seriously thinking about whether or not this is actually going to produce these number of units.
And what's, and what would the, what's the mechanism for that? And that's the annual progress report. So we're always identifying the, the numbers. If an ADU comes in and it starts from application to issuance of permits to building permit final, right? Or C of O. That process was completely retooled in 2018, I believe, where it, they're keeping track of every project that comes through and it's being monitored every year. So we're getting credit for those that come in. And those numbers are then being reflected as a cannot change number. So we get an Excel sheet that then identify, I don't want to get too granular here, but that then identifies the number that we had the previous year. And then it knocks, knocks down our 53 to 40, let's say. We, so we did 13 ADUs. That's pretty, pretty average for what we typically do. We're at 40. Great, we're at 40. But what did you also do from an affordable housing level beyond just the ADUs? ADUs are going to cover us only so far.
Yeah.
There's, there's high probability that they're going to be looking at other projects, especially projects that have applications in, that are being processed and then aren't being seen all the way through. They're going to see that as a red, as a red flag more than likely.
So they'll be looking at the individual projects. I guess what I'm trying to understand, and Chair Quilisi brought it up, like if you have this, we have this 53 number. Let's say we make this, we, we provide the SPL, we provide this availability, we got 53 areas to allow this to happen. And we only get 15. And that's all the people that applied. We have, we have the supply, but we don't, just don't have the demand. So the, the state is going to nail us for that? Or do they, they look at each individual project that was submitted and it was either denied or approved? You know what I mean?
Right.
So they're looking at each project.
But if you wind up with no applicants, it's telling you something.
Yeah, it's something wrong with the barriers. You're putting up barriers.
It's, you're saying, well, it's not up to us to build things, you know? But the fact is that nobody's applying because all these, this whole process that we have designed is so complicated and so difficult and it involves so many hoops and we haven't cleared those away, you know?
Absolutely.
A community that's a reputation, this is a hard community to build in.
Someone to then take, take the position that the city is not living up to its commitment to make it possible to build affordable housing. By not, it doesn't even take overt denials of projects. It, it could take not clearing away difficult and unnecessary requirements. That, that would constitute the city not living up to what the state requires of the city. I'm not saying that we shouldn't have any here, nothing of the sort. What I'm saying is, nobody's required to build anything. The city is required to make it possible and practical and not too difficult to do it, period.
Well, but we've not had, as part of our discourse since I've been here, a lot of discussion about, hey, you know, we're supposed to be clearing stuff away here, we're supposed to be helping this stuff get done. And, and yet we've got, at the end of a, you know, five-hour meeting, we've got one person who is hanging us up on one stupid thing and we're that close to unlocking something. And it, I mean, is that, is that an allowed part of the discourse? I guess I'm saying is, you know, we're trying to meet, we're trying to meet goals and timetables here, you know? State's saying goals and timetables. For us to sort of sit back and sort of say, well, you know, we.
Well, I think one of the things that we would look at would be our code. And that's where the parking issue comes up, because that's in the code. We'd have to change the code.
Let me just help frame, help frame. I think it's within the framework of what Starkweather was saying, what, what Bennett is, is alluding to and what, what Trent, you were just saying. And there is actually a task, a, a specific program that speaks to comprehensive evaluation of the development standards of the SPL overlay. That is something that's going to be coming before this body.
Good.
And that's obviously something that's going to be coming before council as well, because it requires a two-step action. So if we're talking about removing barriers or clarifying compliance with state law and regulations in terms of objective standards, certainly that's within this SPL piece right here. Most certainly. And I would say definitely, because that was one of the comments that we got back when we first had the conversation with HCD. And mind you, they, they were saying, you don't have objective standards, you have subjective standards. And we said, yes, we realize that. First program, fix it, right? That's, immediately they're like, that's not, all that you can apply right now are just the setbacks and other things. Anything else that you're looking to apply that's subjective? Sorry, state law says you can't anymore.
Could you, could you bring that back to the development agreement? You said earlier that the.
Wait, hold on, we, I don't want to talk specifically about specific projects. And a project that is specifically going through a lot of discussion. We can talk generally.
Okay, I'm, in general.
I think the attorney's ears are perking up here as well.
Would a project that our city turned down, like, didn't agree, yes. Start over, right? If, if a proposal comes to the city that includes affordable housing and the city turns it down, is that the red mark? Is that when the attorney general comes after us?
I can't give you an exact answer about when the attorney general will, will come or, or not come after a city. I will say that the attorney general's office, under Attorney General Robonta, has created a, I think it's called the Housing Strike Force.
Yeah.
They have a budget of about $4 million, which in the big scheme of things, it's not a ton of money. So they are looking at the most egregious offenders. Currently, I, I think their big project is reviewing San Francisco's entire planning and permitting process. So I, I will say that nothing is off the table in terms of removing impediments to housing. And as Commissioner Starkweather pointed out earlier, when SB 9 came up, they were sending letters to cities that had, that they were thinking were clearly breaking the law and every city backed down, except for Pasadena, and they reached a mutually satisfactory agreement. So it doesn't necessarily involve, you know, HCD could do it, it could be the attorney general's office, which are, you know, two separate state agencies. But it could be everything from like a holistic review, as San Francisco's case, or a letter about a certain, you know, issue.
Could I follow up on that? Because there's two sides of it. One is whether we get, could get sued, and I think we should worry about that. The other is, are we actually morally, socially actually trying to carry out what our obligation is in terms of making housing, affordable housing more available? So I just give it, I'm not going to mention a specific place, but I'll mention specific reasons. We don't have any water. We, for affordable housing. We got too much traffic. It's going to be air pollution. People are going to come in the city that we don't like. I mean, I could go on and on and stuff I've heard in this town. If that decided three commissioners here and three city council there, I think we'd start to be in trouble. Besides, we shouldn't be doing that anyway, because it's totally subjective. And the, the other thing is that we, we ought to, as a board, when we, I don't know how to do this, but when we hear those kinds of objections to something, we ought to clarify for people what are subjective and what are, what are, what we can do. You know? We can't be deciding on the basis of, you know, the, 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 the trees are beautiful now and, you know, whatever, kinds of things. They have to be actually subjective reasons for turning something down. And, object, excuse me. And I think we need to educate the public on this.
Yeah, could that be part of this?
July.
Because they seem to think that they can come up with any reason they want, if they don't want it, and they're going to stop it. I mean, I've heard people say, we don't, we want to decide what kind of people we have in this town. Literally. And speeches, I won't say where, who, but, you know, I mean, that's, we are, we have a, we have a history, 22 years of doing nothing. So if we start turning down two or three projects, I think we will get on our radar. And we should.
Well, that, that brings up a good point. Could that be something that would be added to this list and help educate the community around affordable housing, what that means? Because I, I really think there's an education gap.
Mr. Seibert and Mr. Wirek and I tried to do that in a panel discussion over at the Arts Center. What was it, two years ago, three years ago?
That was one, the one I moderated.
Was that two years ago?
No, no. Maybe it was, I think it was.
Yeah, I moderated that one, yes.
Yeah. The point is, affordable housing is not, is not an aspirational vague thing. It's real.
Yes.
But you have to say affordable to whom and where.
Yes.
And most people, I don't want to say everybody, but an awful lot of people are still of a mind to say, well, if it's affordable, then the guy that cuts my, my lawn, if I still had one, I don't, it's just dead. But the guy that cuts my lawn has to be able to afford to live there. That's what affordable means. And it is not.
Right, yeah. That's very subjective.
People, that's, that is a most subjective.
Yeah.
Kind of standard, and it doesn't cut it in the law.
Right.
But, but to get back to, to asking questions, because this is a discussion item, we're not going to come to a decision tonight.
No, no.
But after we finish asking questions of staff, and I'd like to explain one thing before we finish that, we have public comment.
Oh, we do.
So I, I apologize. One, one more question.
Speak.
On, on, on the comprehensive evaluation of the development standards of the SPL overlay. Could we put on, could we put on standards that overlay our code? For example, our code says, you can't have a residential home unless you have two-card covered parking. So you have to have two-card covered parking in order to build a residential home, right? That's what our code says. Most of our houses in Ohio don't meet that qualification, but that's in our code.
But they're grandfathered.
Right, they're grandfathered. So if we have this, if we have this SPL, if we have this SPL overlay, could we put an exception in the SPL overlay for that requirement on parking? Meaning, we could eliminate it, we could reduce it? Or would we have to go back and amend the initial code for parking?
That's, that's a recommendation that we might make to the city council to change the code.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Precisely.
That's what I want to come back to.
It's a two-step process.
Yeah, so I got, my initial question is, could we put a, a standard in the SPL overlay to override our code?
The overlay is, to a certain degree, the, so when you're looking at the base zone, like for instance, the C1, we were talking about earlier. The C1 zone has specific parameters. But guess what? If you apply the SPL and you're then meeting all those criteria, suddenly your development standards shift to maybe a more flexible parameter, like the, the parking or setbacks, height and, and, and number of stories is certainly a touchy subject. But those are, are pieces to the puzzle of what we're, we're talking about. And certainly within the deliberation that we had, I want to say it was two years ago, maybe. Yeah.
It's been three, sir.
Has it been that long? Okay. I just remember walking away licking my wounds. I was like, jeepers, man. We have a very passionate group of people. I was very new at that time.
But to Commissioner Starkweather's point, parking is a big problem with all of the stuff that we ever see. So with this, we could potentially remediate that.
Yeah, the SPL.
There was a.
Parking is a top-level issue in this city.
Yeah.
Different people have different ideas of what kind of a problem it is.
Absolutely.
Or isn't.
Now, if parking does come up when these objective standards come forward, I will be identifying what the state law has when you're applying affordable housing standards. And those, those standards for parking are very, very, you've seen projects before this body where there was questions on parking and the response was, they are applying state standards because of the affordability. Because of the affordability, it's, it's much looser. We cannot use the standards that we have baked into our code.
Okay.
But that's not to say that a city couldn't go further, meaning less restrictive than what we have. Now there's obviously some give and take that comes along with that, too.
One of the people's self-help housing projects in Santa Barbara has a huge apartment building and there is no parking. No cars allowed.
No cars allowed?
No cars.
Or it's all on street parking?
Yeah, you can't, you can't tell somebody they can't.
Is that a?
Well, it's, it's a whole building.
You can't live here if you own a car.
Okay, that's, that's probably right, but it's a whole building that has no parking.
I mean, that, that's different, they just don't have parking.
And it's downtown.
That puts it down to the decisions of individuals about whether they want to live under those conditions. But you can't make a law. But you can't make a law that says if you own a car, you can't live here.
That's correct, but what you, what a lot of places are doing in cities are eliminating any minimum parking requirements for development. So it's up to the developer to decide if they're going to have any.
I don't know how it happened, but no parking.
That's what I'm in favor of.
We can have more deliberation on that. I would certainly love to give some kind of overarching examples of where that's, that's been favorable. Are there any more questions? Because I know we do have one public comment.
I, I would like to save my remarks until we've heard from Mr. Wirek, if that's okay with all the commissioners.
Sure.
Please come forward, sir. And, and this is, this is three minutes. It's not Miley time.
Yeah, I, I wanted to ask your indulgence on that.
Well, five minutes, I'll give you five.
Because I, I, I'm getting too old to pull all-nighters, and I've got some financial reporting deadlines to meet for tomorrow. And I wonder if I could combine my liaison report with the, my comments, and then I'll have to leave.
Love to hear whatever you have to say.
Yeah, I apologize for that, but I just, I just, I just, I pulled an all-nighter Monday night. I'm just, I just can't do it twice in one week at the age of 70. Anyway, I think each of you has really hit on an important element. And that is a stricter, more comprehensive view of is our zoning code consistent with our housing element? And there's many examples of where it's not. And the staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's anything preventing this commission from putting on an agenda and identifying, we think this needs to be looked at in terms of inconsistency between our code and our housing element. I think that's perfectly appropriate for, for commission to do that. You know, and identify that and ask council to look at it or, you know, and see if council will authorize staff to look at it, that kind of thing. I think that's perfectly acceptable. And an example of that is what you all just discussed, which was a fascinating discussion. And that is that if you look up in our code, we do have a shared-use parking provision that has hardly ever been used, but it's only shared use across private parcels. Well, why the heck doesn't that also include public parking availability in a shared-use analysis? And, you know, you ran into that with the, the Evergreen renovation, where it's right next to a public parking area, but they were running into all kinds of issues with the parking ratios in our code in terms of the renovations that made no, did not, was not consistent with common sense, in my opinion. And it's not the fault of staff that they're applying the ratios that are in the code, you know? But the problem with ratios, parking ratios, is those are based on handling peak load needs, not average load needs. And it's inherently, we, there's lots of analysis, again, the Strong Towns analysis set is one good example. A lot of what we still have baked into our code in these sort of fixed ratio, parking ratio, ratio, excuse me, is associated with sprawl development. It's associated with car-centric development. And I can tell you that I really think that's one way of looking at, rather than, you know, whether or not we really need to be expansive-minded in how, in terms of thinking about how we can look at our code, like maybe expanding the definition of shared-use parking analysis to include public availability, our street parking, our public parking areas, in the analysis to get away from the sprawl implications of some of the parking requirements that are still baked into our code from a previous era, frankly. So I just, I really commend you guys for kind of honing in on that and thinking about that. Yeah, look at that shared-use parking thing and think about how that might be amended. It's in the code. I, you know, I think that there is some inconsistencies where the segregated uses, the ratio view of parking that is not consistent with the character of town that we want and not consistent with the character of the town that's in our general plan. And I think this commission has every right to think about that and look about that and ask questions of, of, of whether, you know, forward a recommendation to council. I think that we need to look at this. I don't, I think there's anything wrong with that. Now, it's, you can't direct staff to do it, but you could ask council. You are, you answer to the council, you know? So anyway, that's just one, one thing I wanted to mention. It was a fascinating discussion. And I want to mention two more things. I think the, I'm hoping that what we're, what we do with the special, with the overlay is perfectly consistent with what you see on Attachment B, page 5 of 16. Facilitate affordable housing development, utilizing the city's police powers, local control to provide appropriate land use and zoning. Well, that's what that is. And so I think it's, it fits in with the general plan perfectly and our programs perfectly. So I think, I would urge you to, you know, kind of, as, you know, I'm rotating off council. Not rotating, I'm not going to be on council, but I plan on being a voice to, you know, please look at things expansively and creatively in terms of having our code be consistent with our housing element. And then I'll get down to something very granular and specific, kind of directed to the chair, to staff. And that is on Attachment B, page 11 of 16, resource constraints. And it talks about, in the last bullet on the page, work in partnership with Casitas Municipal Water District, OBGMA, CMWD, and the County of Ventura. I would like to suggest two changes to that language for staff and the commission to consider. One is, it's not well-understood that we have two groundwater management agencies that cover the city limits. Not just OBGMA, that's our primary water supply, but the other side of the Y, we have a good bit of the city that's in the jurisdiction of the Upper Ventura River Groundwater Management Agency.
Even if it's on this side of the Y?
Yeah, on the, yeah, on the other side of the Y from here is the Upper Ventura River. This is OBGMA. But on the other side of the, of the, of the Y, on the, the Vons area, the, the school district, that property, that, that area is actually outside of OBGMA jurisdiction.
Outside the basin.
It's outside the basin, but in the Upper Ventura River Groundwater Sustainability Agency. I think we ought to include the Upper Ventura River as an agency we work with, especially since we've applied for membership to be a member of that agency. But even if we're not a member of that agency, the city limits do extend into the other agency. So I think that ought to be listed in terms of working partnership. And also, I think, rather than say County of Ventura, I would ask that we consider being specific. I believe that's the Waterset Protection District. That would be the county agency that we work with. That's the, we'd be specific about the county agency rather than just County of Ventura. I think that would be useful. But I, I do, I just wanted to make those couple.
Bill, what about the sanitation district? Does that?
Well, in terms of resource constraints, you know, that's an interest, that's actually an interesting comment because if you're talking about recycling effluent, which is a major and coming issue, I mean, moving from, if we move from sewer, septic to sewer, we don't want to really just highway express that water down out of the, out of the aquifer when we could treat it and displace use of potable water for irrigation purposes, for example. So I think that's an interesting comment, that that ought to be maybe an agency that, that would be part of looking with resource constraints because I, I believe the, the specific is that, I believe, for Mr. Palmer told me something along the line of 33,000 gallons a day goes into septic tanks in the arborata, inside and outside of the city limits. And think about having, having a scalping plant that would be partially financed by the, the Ojai Valley Inn to use that for irrigation instead of using potable water. A lot of old-timers, I mean, you know, people in their 80s, 90s and just wonderful treasures of history, their perception is that when we move the treatment plant from inside the valley to outside the valley, south of Foster Park, they thought they, that in my, in their minds, there was a real distinct sort of quote-unquote drying out because all of that treated output from the, the plant wasn't going into recharge anymore. It was piped out to be put in the river. They put about, I think about a million gallons a day, on average, into the Ventura River, south of Foster Park. It keeps the...
1.3 to 1.4 million.
Yeah, you're on the sanitation district, is that about right, order of magnitude?
1.3 to 1.4 million gallons a day goes through the treatment plant.
And most of that comes from, is potable water use inside the valley?
Well...
Good groundwater.
But there's still the Pepsi plant and things like that.
There, there are, there are a couple.
A few.
The biggest, the biggest commercial customer is the Pepsi plant.
Yeah.
Which doesn't just do Pepsi, they do all of the coffee and dairy-involved beverages
Right.
across the country.
Wow.
Starbucks sells.
Oh, wow.
My God.
And so you can imagine, there's a great deal of water flowing through that plant.
Yeah.
And there's a great deal of sewage.
Right. But if you take the...
Byproducts of producing those beverages, but...
If you just take the Pepsi plant out, let's say, it's a fair statement that you're the chair of the sanitation district that, that it's at least hundreds of thousands of the gallons a day would, is potable water use in the Ojai Valley that's taken, is treated out there rather than used for recharge or reuse inside the valley.
Okay, if you, if you look at, at how much water or how much, let's say, how much effluent, we'll take a nice clinical view of it, how much effluent hits the treatment facility? And compare that to how much water comes out of the ground, whether it's private wells, Casitas wells.
Or the reservoir, or from the, or from the lake.
About two dozen other water agencies in the valley.
Right.
Besides Casitas. They're all small, but there's also a large number of private wells. The amount of effluent that hits the treatment plant is about 8%
Right.
of what comes out of the ground. And the rest of it is either going down the river already, or it's soaking into the ground.
And does that include the lake water? Use of lake water for domestic use?
To the extent that anyone in Ojai is using lake water, I'm not sure how...
Did that 8% include the use of Casitas water?
Oh, yes.
That 8%?
That's all the water that, that's all the water that's used.
Right. But as a percentage of total potable use, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that the standard that's coming is to maximize the use of effluent for other uses rather than just...
You need to go to Sacramento for that because right now...
You can use it for irrigation.
Right now, state law says all the effluent from the treatment plant is required to go into the river.
No, that's a Ventura County.
No, that's, yeah, that's a deal we have been through.
That's a Ventura County agreement for when they leased the land for the sanitation district. That, that, their rider first refusal, that's, that's to protect them, the county, the City of Ventura. That's a City of Ventura issue on terms of, that's not, that's to keep the City of Ventura from being in trouble with the state regulators.
But...
Because it's their land.
Yes.
But all over Southern California, there are cities that are literally taking their sewer and recycling it. There's some major projects going on.
Let's back off the big picture. What I wanted to say is that I think maybe the Ojai Valley Sanitation District ought to be included in the partner agencies for, and another smaller example is going from the septic to sewer, which is a ticking, that tick-tock, it's going to happen.
Oh.
And one way or another, and do we want to have that, all that septic effluent that then becomes part of the sanitation district? Should we be looking at the possibility of using that for irrigation rather than taking out of the valley?
Do we know how much is septic tanks? Is it enough that they're...
Well, Jeff Palmer told me something around 33,000 gallons a day.
So that could create some kind of recharge?
I don't, I don't have that statistic.
Yeah.
Huh, interesting.
And I'm not talking about potable, I'm talking about...
That's people not putting anything into the treatment plant right now.
Yeah.
I'm talking about irrigation, okay? Anyway, all I'm trying to say is I think maybe the sanitation district ought to be one of the partners.
I think it's a good idea, and, and, I don't know if anybody watched the last Building Appeals Board meeting.
I was there.
Yeah, that's right. I was, I was asked to make a Planning Commission report to the BAB. I'm glad I looked at the agenda a couple of days ahead, or I wouldn't have known that my presence was required. But I gave them a page of bullets. What, what's the Planning Commission been doing since the last BAB meeting, which was August of 2021?
Wow.
They have a very limited set of things that they can deal with. But I tried to make clear to them that whereas gray water plumbing is a building standards code issue, and whereas the state does not require gray water plumbing within the building code, within the plumbing code, whatever, the use of gray water, I contend, is a land use issue. And in fact, if you go into the municipal code and you search on gray water, one word, gray water, you will find it in Title 10 and nowhere else.
Yeah.
Now, Title 9 does incorporate by reference the plumbing code, but the building official tells me there's no requirement for gray water plumbing in the plumbing.
But the council can fix that.
So, yeah, my...
The council can fix that by changing the code.
And adding above, above state building code into our, our local code, right?
So my perception...
But it's perfectly within the purview
Oh.
of the Planning Commission to suggest
Absolutely.
land use.
Absolutely.
That if gray water can practically be segregated from black water,
Right.
that we strongly encourage people to do that and keep the water on the property.
Absolutely.
Which is just what we did with the Humane Society.
Yeah, I would agree.
And, and I think that's, that's perfectly defensible. It doesn't have to be in the code that you're required to do gray water. And we didn't require them to do gray water. We strongly encouraged them to keep gray water on the property.
Right.
Period.
And then we have the analysis of how much water just falls on a roof that we could be putting into tanks
Stormwater caps.
as well.
So one of the things that I thought was interesting, listening to that meeting, this was the building codes meeting, there had, there was a, there was a proposal that came out of the building code office but didn't, hadn't been vetted anywhere else, which was that if you build more than $25,000, fixing up your property.
Yeah, that was, that was the fire.
You're going to have to add 20% for fire hardening.
It was doing like what you have for hardship allowance for any...
So what I thought was interesting out of that, though, as the discussion, her and Mr. Daddy and others talking about, well, you know, maybe we ought to encourage people to do this. It just seemed like we didn't have any comprehensive strategy.
It's not encouraged, it's required.
I know, but we, this didn't, it seemed like before the building codes just kind of picks out one thing. There ought to have been some strategies related to trying to reduce water use and trying to reduce energy use. And it includes planning, because some of these are land use, like landscaping, and some might be others. But we have no, we have no strategy.
One of my issues with doing it only with, when a permits are pulled, is we don't have many permits.
Well, some of these though...
And why, why should we only have programs that are permit-driven for things like fire hardening or gray water use? Can we think of incentives to get people that aren't pulling a permit to do it? Or, what I'm trying to say is, we have so few permits. If we're really trying to change the character of the community meaningfully, rather than just virtue signal, you know, maybe we ought to be looking at, how can we provide incentives or programs for gray water use, whether you're pulling a building permit or not? Fire hardening your house, whether you're pulling a building permit or not? Looking at it as a maintenance issue or a, just a home improvement issue? I, I just think we need to think about this on a broader basis than just making it a requirement and a permit. Plus, I worry that you discourage people from pulling a permit, maybe, if you... The proposal in front that was made by the building official, I have a, I have a problem with because it was going to increase the valuation by that increment on top of the valuation for the permit, which makes the permit more expensive. I don't think that's the incentive direction we ought to be going.
Yeah, Mr. Daddy was kind of making your point. It's like, we ought to be looking at ways of incentivizing. So when you think about water, you might call it water retrofit of existing buildings.
Right.
Or energy retrofit. I mean, one thing is to remove barriers. That's the lowest hanging fruit. The other is to incentivize, and that doesn't have to be money, but it can be making things easier or reducing fees.
If we're going to have, we, you need to have a broader, we can't just be specific when someone pulls a permit as being the only mechanism for, for...
Yeah, it's kind of like the reach code.
I don't know exactly how to do it, but I think we ought to think about how to do it.
Yeah, it's like the reach code. We passed a reach code for new buildings, but we have no new buildings. What's the point? What's the point?
I that kind of, yeah, that, I mean, all I all I'm saying is I, I just wanted to get up here and, you know, I think I'll probably have one more meeting with you guys. Before I'm off council.
Bring something even more provocative.
And uh, I just, I just think that you're on to something.
Twice a month, sir.
Well, yeah, I'll perfect my three minute limit, you know, in the future. But I I do think that, uh, I really appreciate listening to the art, to the discussion, and wanna just add something in terms of thinking broadly.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
About the role you could play in in making, you know, some real improvements to our community.
Yeah, I agree, we need to start moving forward with some real action items versus just talk.
Yeah, and not just, oh, well, you know, make, it's it's gonna have impact.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Rather than just check, you know.
Flower language.
Exactly. Alright, guys, I I really, I've gotta go, but thank you.
We should go. Hey, I wanna follow up what he just suggested though. Cause he was saying that we don't have to wait for staff to come six months a year to come back to us. That we could actually be proactively looking at how we can move this along. I'm just wondering, and we don't even, we could have a subcommittee or something that would actually start working on some of this stuff, or.
Two of us.
Have one.
Well, I'd like to have some input in it.
Right.
Because I have a lot of ideas about, I'm not talking about the how the regulations work, I'm talking about actual substantive stuff. And we could even bring, we could have a subcommittee that has people from the outside this board. That's not illegal, and Bell, Bell Wyler could be on a subcommittee helping us think of ideas.
We can, we can have an ad hoc committee of two commissioners. And they can meet with.
People outside.
Citizens, yes. We, we still have, though it hasn't met for two years, we still have a standing committee of this commission.
We do.
Called the Complete Streets Committee.
Oh, yes.
But.
Is anybody on it?
To meet once a month in the afternoon before one of the planning commission meetings. It hasn't met for, it's gotta be two years now, it hasn't met.
Ah, yeah.
Um, and I.
That used to be a public meeting though, cause I remember hearing about it.
A public meeting.
Yeah, cause I, people used to go to it.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, my wife went to it.
Were the two commissioners that were there, but there was normally eight to ten people in the meeting.
Yeah.
The rest of them are all from outside. Uh, but I wanted to bring something back to what you were talking about and and just give all the commissioners a little bit of a preview. More than two years ago, close to three years ago, Lucas and I started a review at the request of the city council to clean up Title Ten, okay? So, once in, I think it was October of twenty twenty. And another time, we we hit, I think it was fifty-two different sections of Title Ten. I I can, well, I'm working on it now, that's why I know the numbers.
Yeah.
There were fifty-two sections of Title Ten that we made recommendations for changes. Now, a lot of it was global.
Yep.
And a lot of it was was format wise, like paragraph numbers aren't right.
References are wrong.
We don't have, we don't have, um, yeah, we have references to missing sections of code or state law. We have, we decided as a commission then, that if you're going to name a section of code, don't just put the number, put the title. So that people reading there get the context of what you're talking about, okay? So fifty-two items, the planning commission approved for recommendation to city council in October of twenty twenty. Another sixty-seven items, separate items, many of the same kinds of changes, but separate items. Sixty-seven more in February of twenty twenty-one. They have not gone forward to council. And therein lies a little extra work for me and and it's Alex now, that Alex and I are working on this. And Alex, when we hit something where it really takes staff, then Alex goes to Lucas to say, how do we straighten this out, this particular section? Alex and I found so far, and we've still got some policy questions, that really should come back to this group as well. But just the cleanup that we're doing, um, Alex and I found about another eighty sections. So we're looking at around two hundred there, and there's very little overlap in this. But about two hundred sections of Title Ten where we where we recommend changes, okay? A hundred and nineteen of them are already passed by the city council, but there's another eighty of them that we're gonna bring back. The problem comes in the creation of the online code. There's an organization called Q Code that actually creates the online code that you find if you go to the city website. Okay, if you give them a change, they pick it up, additions, deletions, whatever. They stick it in. Okay, they will be cognizant of was stuff italicized or not italicized. To some extent, maybe they will look at the proper format for numbering of subsections and such. And there is a strict protocol in the code for that. But they pick up whatever you give them and off you go, okay? So, so, right now, we have a hundred and twenty pieces that have not gone to Q Code. They haven't gone to the council, so they haven't gone to Q Code. So, the Title Ten that Alex and I and Lucas are working on is still the Title Ten language from three years ago. By and large, there's a few changes that he's made, but by and large, it's the language from three years ago. So if we are going to do a package, we as the count, as the commission, are going to do a package. It's gotta be a cumulative package, or the changes from before will never get in the code.
So this will be like a red line addition, you'll, we'll see all the changes?
And I just, I and and I wanted to to give you a heads up. Uh, and I can't give you a timeline right now because Alex is up to here with stuff, Lucas is up to here with stuff. And I'm, I'm trying to just grumble through it by myself right now, just to get a a document in the proper format for a text amendment resolution. But you will, what you will see when we get done is all of these code sections. And where they have been changed by prior commissions, it will be highlighted in light gray. Where it's a code change that is new that Alex and I and Lucas have been working on, that'll be in yellow. So those are the new ones that when we get this done, we will ask the commission to give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down recommendation to city council on those provisions. But while we're at it, if you see something in any section of Title Ten that you think needs to be changed, this is the time to do it. So that we can get this cumulative correction. Send it to city council and get it to Q Code, because until we get that last step done, it's not in the code.
So a question on that, you you're not talking about substance though, you're just talking about.
I'm talking about whatever, I'm talking about, if you think there's something that needs to be fixed.
So it's like a subjective status, a subjective standard say.
Ten-two-seven-oh-four you mentioned.
Yeah.
And ten-two-nine-oh-seven is density bonus. I'm sorry, I I.
That's fine.
Here with all the numbers. But if you see something that you think needs fixing, let's talk about it. And let's get it into our list of suggested changes to the code to recommend to city council. Cause until they approve it and Q Code gets it and puts it online, it isn't real.
Right.
So on the one thing that we talked about earlier, which is the special housing overlay district, which we all kinda thought needed to be upgraded, do we, do we need like a cause I I don't know that makes sense for each individual person to go through and write in their own suggestions. It seems like that needs to be sort of a group process, that we go through things and say, what makes sense and why? Should we have a like a workshop on just this and how we would wanna make it more flexible and work for, you know?
Is that, is there a way to do this privately, or does a workshop have to be a public?
Workshops are public meetings.
Yeah, anytime.
Well, not necessarily, but here's what I I think you could potentially do is you could create an ad hoc that focuses on a specific area. Where you have two members of this body, put their heads together.
A quorum in an ad hoc committee.
Right, you can't have, so basically two, you can do two.
And also, a quorum here involves at least two city residents.
Oh, yes, well, that's true with this body as well as other commissions as well.
So it doesn't apply to me, I you could have three people as long as I'm. Cause I'm not a city resident.
You can be part of a quorum, but you have to be part of a quorum of three with two city residents.
Oh, I see.
Jamie and Judy cannot be a quorum.
Oh, so we could form a committee and then we wouldn't even violate the rules.
Just to, just to clarify, it, you still would need three.
Right.
So if you had three and only one was was a um, a resident, that would not be a quorum. We we fell into that habit early on in the year, where that technicality caused an item to come back to this body.
So, if I'm on a committee and there's two city residents, then that's not a quorum.
You're on an ad hoc and it's, it's only two, and you're both, and you're both residents, doesn't matter, it has to be at least.
It's only two on the ad hoc committee.
You're okay, yeah, we're okay from a brown necked, and I'll look for the nod, yes, we're okay. So, if this, that wasn't necessarily where I was thinking this was gonna go, but if that's where this body is wanting to go from from an ad hoc standpoint, I certainly, you could certainly have that conversation and and form one and then work from, work from there. I mean, it it's a discussion.
Well, I think SPL, I think parking, I'm not sure density bonus, that's, that's pretty well codified right now.
Well, I, there are several, there are several revisions that need to be made to the density bonus, for sure.
Yeah.
Um, we're about, I wanna say four years, maybe five years behind with density bonus in terms of the regulation changes that have come forward.
That's something that would have to come from staff though, right?
Well, it's already a program that's built into this housing element, so we're obligated to do that from an updating standpoint, so could it start from staff? Absolutely, could we put together a red line? Absolutely. Is that something that we're working in as a part of the process? Absolutely. Can I tell you what that timeline looks like? It's not in the near term.
Yeah, what I'm thinking in that terms is.
We do have at least three-year-old direction from the city council to update Title Ten.
Well, not only three-year direction, but it's it's within the work program.
Yeah.
So you you have full reign.
Ten-two-oh-seven is actually part of Title Ten. Um, but I, all I'm thinking, maybe we could divide it into like two, but do different parts, but we are a potential resource to expand the speed at which we get things done. I mean, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I can certainly read codes and so forth, and I've been involved in developing plans. But other people have other backgrounds too, so I think we could be working with staff and maybe expanding. Cause we have a limited staff and everything seems to be, take forever, because we don't have ten people on a staff to do things.
Better, at least initially, if you wanna see changes in some part of Title Ten that that you put together your ideas without involving staff.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah. No, I agree, so that, you know.
Bring it back, if there's an ad hoc committee.
Course, I guess we could do it in.
Talk about.
Two people meet.
SPL overlay.
Yeah.
Say, if there are two people that wanna do that, then go do that. I'll give you what changes we, the the prior commissions have already approved, if any. In the SPL overlay, that's the ten-two-nine-oh-seven. And required parking is ten-two-fourteen-oh-five or fourteen-oh-seven, I can't remember. I think it's fourteen-oh-five. Um, if somebody wants to tackle parking, if two people wanna tackle parking. Make suggestions and and then we'll compare it to what previous commissions have already approved.
Mm-hmm.
And see if there's more changes that this commission wants to make.
Okay.
And then, once, once you've, once you two, whichever you two is, come to some conclusions. Then ask Lucas about it, see if there's, or ask the city attorney if there's any legal barriers to doing that.
Yeah, I would start with.
And then, then we can consolidate it into a general text amendment to go to city council.
But we probably wanna have a discussion when we break back, yeah. Cause other people.
I'm saying, I'm saying, make sure there's nothing illegal about it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Make sure that there's not something that Lucas knows about that says, I'm sorry, but you can't do that. And then, let's consolidate it and let's talk the whole thing. And remember, when you get this document, the stuff that's gray has already been approved by a prior commission. But the stuff that's in yellow is new changes.
Yeah.
And you may wanna add new yellow stuff yourself. That's what we should talk about.
Sounds like a divide and conquer, yes.
Is there, is the city council, that's something going on with parking?
They have an ad hoc committee too, to talk about.
I've talked to both members of the ad hoc committee, and I don't think they've met for quite a while, and one of them's going off the council. So, I mean, I don't think we're gonna get anything on parking.
I can't speak to that, but here's what I can't speak to.
I work for the guy who works for them.
I like to go, I like to go straight to the horse's mouth.
I will say this, from, from an SPL overlay standpoint, it's pretty specific, it's pretty pretty wide open from a task-oriented program standpoint for the housing element, which gives this body and certainly staff reign to analyze uh and dissect and then come back with revisions. And if that's done through an ad hoc, with staff helping support that in any way, shape or form. I think that's certainly within the provisions and parameters of this body.
Certainly SPL and parking are two things.
Definitely.
That are high interest to this group, I think.
Well, and I think obviously this is the the major land use crisis of our town at the moment, I would say, is housing. I mean, we ought to be finding, get a handle on it.
Okay, so are there, are there two people here that would like to take on parking?
I'd love to take it on. I have been pushing for parking for, you know, ever since I came to this town.
You can have an ad hoc committee of one.
No, someone else might wanna work on it. Trent sounds like he's interested.
Well, yeah, that's true, well, you and I, yeah, we were an ad hoc committee, but I'm the only commissioner.
Not on the commission, so it's, it's an ad hoc of one.
In housing though, aren't you, Judy, do you have time? We can combine those two together.
Park, you're you're gonna slide affordable housing.
And parking together, because it's about the same, unless someone else wants to do parking, but.
I mean, I'll, I'll certainly look at what you guys have come up with.
Okay.
We will all do that. I don't care.
Pardon? Okay, so you and I can work on parking and Judy and I will work on housing, is that, about that okay?
Keep them separate, so, does this require a motion to create ad hoc committees, sir?
Yes, I would, I would encourage the planning commission to do a motion for clarity for the minutes and um, also for posterity sake.
The motion I I would anticipate then would be to appoint an ad hoc committee of Commissioner Bennett. Excuse me, Vice Chair Bennett and Commissioner Starkweather to look at parking. And an ad hoc committee of Commissioner Starkweather and Commissioner Murphy to look at affordable housing. Changes, potential changes to. Changes, potential changes to sections of Title X.
Yeah, mainly the S, you know, the, the housing overlay part.
Oh, the S, okay. With emphasis on the SPL overlay.
Yes.
So, and I can make that motion, right? I, the chair can make a motion.
Absolutely.
Okay, so I do.
You get to second that.
Yeah, cause we can't second on that. We could, but.
I second.
Very good.
Okay, we're good.
Discussion? All right, then Sherry, if you're still out there in, in cyberland somewhere, would you call a roll on this motion to create two ad hoc committees?
Quilisi?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes, Starkweather.
Yes.
All right.
That was a long discussion.
Well, it's, it's worthwhile material for a planning commission. And I didn't wanna get down in the weeds, but I did send three questions. What parts of the ADU ordinance must be amended to comply with state law? Because if there are some of those, for example, they oughta be going into the changes that we're doing right now.
Sure.
To ten two seventeen oh nine.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at those state law revisions. I don't remember the, the assembly bills, but those were.
If you have a summary of those.
Uh, I've, I've seen that. Legal sent that to us, so, to staff, so we've had a chance to look at it. It's just a matter of plugging those.
Okay. The same goes with
Density bonus?
That's program four.
Yeah.
Program eight is density bonus.
Yes, and there's been several revisions that we haven't reflected.
And we should put those into the new text amendment, proposed text amendment. And program eleven is special needs housing. I'm sure the legislature has done something.
They have.
Special needs housing, this session and every session. But whatever those, whatever those changes are, Mr. City Attorney, uh, we should be getting those into the newest of our proposed text amendments to sections of Title X.
Yeah, our, our office is working on, um, memos on all the, the new housing legislation, because there's a flurry of it.
Those were just signed.
Yes, yes. September thirtieth was the decision day when all the bills are on Newsom's desk and he has to sign them or veto them. So, uh, yeah, I and other associates at the attorney are cranking out a bunch of memos at the moment.
So you're gonna give us a memo outlining how all these bills affect us?
Affect the city.
That's what I meant, the city, the city of Ojai.
Yeah, or just, if, if you just explain what the changes are.
Right.
We'll try to translate that into what does it mean for changing our code. But we don't know what the changes are right now.
Right, we'll be, yeah, staff will be identifying that.
Okay, okay.
And that'll be through, more than likely be through red line and then through explanation to the staff report.
Oh, so you'll make a red line of an individual section of code?
That's likely to be what'll end up happening with, with those.
Okay. All right, well, that's part of what Alex and I are doing too. Okay.
When I say, when I say staff, I don't necessarily mean me. We actually have a staff now, so.
All right, let's move on to item four. Do we, do we have an update on the priorities of Planning Commission and Community Development Department?
Yeah, I wanna highlight the very first bullet, which is General Plan Update Elements and Affordable Housing Goals and Policies. That's what we just discussed for quite some time.
Yeah.
Um, those programs, I, I think it's important that, and I appreciate, look, I get to geek out on this stuff and I appreciate that, that this body does the same thing because I enjoy doing this uh, more than you may ever know. And if I had more than one body, I would certainly be doing current planning and advanced planning and then somehow be here helping to facilitate and answer questions.
Loan yourself.
Right, exactly. But be it as it may, uh, the focus for this work program is really the, the piece that we just spoke about. And I think it's important to note that we're really touching on a bunch of these and trying to put them all in some sort of sequenced order to, to make sure that we're, one, addressing state law, two, following our own rules that we've, that we've put in place and that council has, um, approved and this body has recommended. Um, and then three, ensuring that the work that's currently being done continues to sled forward and doesn't get stuck. We dealt with that for about eighteen months to two years. I think, uh, the chair and I were trying to figure out ways to get those unstuck, but it was just a matter of them being there until we had some staff to help unstick that. And I think we're starting to, to see that sled move forward, which is encouraging certainly. And certainly, hearing from the public and hearing from this body recognizing that, look, everybody recognizes that there's issues with certain sections, uh, whether it be through, um, the municipal code or through clarifications or making sure we're meeting deadlines from the general plan standpoint, um, specifically the housing element. But I think it's also important to note that progress is being made and we wanna make sure we're noting that with each and every meeting that we have, so, sort of make that, make that statement.
Yeah, thank you.
Progress.
Progress. Yeah, I guess we could pat ourselves on the back to a certain degree.
Hard to, hard to do. It is very hard to do in those towns.
Look, and being, being progressive with this body creating the ad hocs, that wasn't necessarily the, the point of putting this on the agenda, but recognizing that this body sees a need for, to take it a step further, I think is encouraging.
I, I think this group of commissioners is the most motivated that I have seen toward making things better.
Appreciate that.
Well.
Being included in that group. Yeah, it is.
Yeah. Okay, let's, let's look at, um, let's look at item five, future agenda items.
Yep. So, October nineteenth, which is our na- next regularly scheduled agenda, um, there are two items. Both of those items are, have been noticed, so there will be public hearings on both of those items. The first is a design review for a new two-story detached garage with an office on the second floor. And the reason why it's coming before this body is because it is a second floor.
Second floor, yeah.
Uh, the second is the VMU discussion and that is, um, that's an item that this body's already seen twice, so.
Article five to article six.
Yep, so you're gonna see a resolution and draft ordinance.
So it's not a discussion item?
No, it's a public hearing.
It's, okay, cause it says discuss, it says VMU discussion.
Oh, it's VMU discussion, but we can remove discussion. It's, it's going.
Public hearing.
It's a public hearing.
On a text amendment resolution.
Correct. So you will have these in advance, I take it, the text amendment. Is there any chance that, um, you can uh, present them to like the newspaper so they have some public awareness that what we're trying to do and, you know, like interview what the changes are or something, because when they're just like on a, on a planning agenda and public hearing, you know, people may not be educated enough to know what we're trying to do. I don't know. Does that make any sense?
So you're saying, should I present?
No, I just like.
I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
That, that unfortunately, when we get our, what day do, we get our agendas on Fridays.
Friday before the, before the Wednesday meeting.
Yeah, so that's too late for the newspaper.
But they're getting a, so there'll be a, there'll be a public notice that's going in the paper. And for this one, because it's citywide.
Previous Friday.
Yes, okay, good.
Yeah, because it's citywide, it's.
Twelve days ahead of the meeting.
So that happened today.
Late page.
Oh, well, I happened to be in the office when it happened. Uh, there was a public notice about the development agreement. So that's going in this Friday's newspaper.
Right, so we're not talking about that though. We're talking about.
I saw the legal notice. It's an actual legal notice.
You're talking specifically about whether or not the VMU.
Yeah, so if the legal notice is going in, you could, you know, the, the newspaper could know that it's happening and you could give them some background so they could actually do a story and tell them what's coming.
Look, the paper has their own deadlines and, and we've gotta make sure that we're mindful of that. So it's being published on Friday, but these notices are being required to them three, four days in advance.
Talk to them at that point, or they could interview you and get a sense of what this is all about.
Yes, they're cer- they can certainly come in and ask questions as, as any.
I will encourage them.
As any citizen is allowed to do.
Kim Rivers is the one who does the reports on the planning commission and the council. And if you think as a private citizen, that there's something, some topic she should be paying attention to or asking Lucas about.
So when you.
Yeah, and, you know, we have a public.
Get those notices the same time the paper does, so.
Is it, is it, is it hold for release for the newspaper, meaning they can't, can they act on it when they get it? Or do they have to, do they have to?
It's a public document as soon as they get it. It's a public record. So whether it's actually printed or not, soon as the, the attorney, well, you can correct me on that, but as soon as they send it out to the public, it becomes a public document. Whether they actually print it or not, uh, you know, there's no.
I don't know when the agendas get posted on the city website. Uh, it's not long before the Friday before our Wednesday meeting. But, but the previous Friday, that is twelve days before the meeting, it's gotta be in the paper because the requirement is ten days.
Yeah.
So that's twelve, and then it's the Wednesday or possibly the Tuesday before that. So you're talking fourteen or fifteen days before the, uh, the agenda comes out, that it's going to be in the paper.
So that, this particular thing, I can't mention the name of it, but it's gonna happen on the eighteenth and they got their notice today. Cause I saw it.
Uh, as well as two other notices, which were the design review permit and the VMU.
Yeah, yeah. That was the one that caught my attention, let's put it that way.
Right, so the public hearing items, those are required at least ten days in advance, at least ten days in advance.
So can we, as commissioners, since it relates to planning, can we get, be sent a copy of those public notices the same time the press?
They are a public record.
Yeah, but there's nobody, then, you don't know about them being public records until they're sent out.
It's, it's the.
Yeah, well, that's, that's like four days later.
It doesn't, it doesn't come out on the city website at the same time that the notice, that the announcement goes to the paper for publishing two or three days afterwards.
Yeah, I think it's, it's important to note that there are a couple of other measures that are required in certain circumstances, like for instance, the design review permit requires two pieces. It requires first, for us to put in the paper and then second, to notify the neighbors, right? So we're using the same notice that's going in the paper is the same notice that we're also sending to those, those residents within a minimum of three hundred feet. In certain circumstances, depending on the situation, we expand that or broaden it to five hundred or a thousand, depending on the situation. That makes sense. So if you're asking for that to be brought forward to this body.
Not the body, just sent to us, since we make a request, yeah, so that we could see it.
The distribution that you do on director's exemptions.
Right. I mean, that's, that's a part of a policy though.
Right, it is.
The direct policy that, that we're following. He's, you're talking about a specific notice that would then come out. You're just talking notices in general, once they're sent out to, um, like for instance, to the paper.
So we know that, that's coming and we might wanna look into it.
Yeah, what goes in the paper is, is a notice of a public hearing.
Correct.
It is not the full agenda.
No.
No, no, I'm not talking about full agendas, just the public hearings.
Right, cause the agenda isn't set at that point.
Was not a public hearing.
No, it wasn't.
So it didn't have to go in the paper ten days ahead.
Yeah, no, I'm just talking about the public hearings.
Right.
But if you're sending it to the paper already, could you not just send it?
To the planning commissioners?
I mean, I could.
Well, I'd request that you would.
I didn't understand this dance.
It's just, it's just a notice of the topic.
Correct.
It's, it's, it's about as much text as you get here in this October nineteenth.
That's not true. The one that was the public hearing had details about the number of units, uh, cause I read it. It talked about how many units are gonna be low income, you know, thirty-three, the whole kind of picture was, was in that, that was in the, in the.
Grand Bargain's a very special case.
So let me just, uh, unpack some of this just for a moment.
Cause I read it.
I don't wanna get into too much detail on the, on the noticing, but I will just say this, from a, from a require, from a state law requirement, like for instance, with the VMU item that's coming as a public hearing, it's required to be an eighth-page ad. And the reason why it's required to be a much larger ad is because it's affecting more than a thousand properties, because it's more than a thousand properties, it's presumed to be more than a, a majority of the city. So, because of that, it doesn't require us to send notification to those affected. It's assumed that the entire city is affected, to some way, shape or form.
It's actually a big ad.
There's a little over three thousand parcels in the city, I think.
Yeah. Versus a very specific project, where if you only look at that particular project, it's a very much, it's a much smaller window that you're looking at.
Just the neighborhood.
Just the neighborhood, maybe five or six units surrounding it, properties surrounding it, and that's pretty much it. So it's a much smaller, uh, envelope.
Same as the recusal zone.
That's true, but that's five hundred feet. For any of the commissioners that are within five hundred feet of a specific project, you would be required to recuse. And we've experienced that a couple of times and I'm already aware of one in the future.
Me and the Grand Bargain and you with all of Steve.
Right.
It keeps, I, I'm very comfortable with it just pushing out every week, or every two weeks when we get this, I go first to the.
Well, that one is in the near term. I am getting all the information for that one and reviewing it currently.
Is that a concept review or is that a DRP?
It's a concept review, yes.
Concept review.
No action taken.
No action taken. Public comment and comments from, certainly we're gonna need comments from the commissioners. And I, I fully expect when we send that out and we'll be doing a notice for that, that there will be people in the audience.
I do not, I do not get the notice though, from the city.
Really?
You're.
You live within the three hundred feet and you don't get the notice?
I do and I do not get the notice and I have talked.
Yeah, I mean, you're on the, yeah, it's the kinda weird thing. People are knowing about something and we don't even know that it's coming to us until like Friday evening, and you might not even look at it till Monday.
Oh, I look at it immediately. What's on?
Spend the weekend on it, yeah.
I'm doing things on the weekend. I'm canvassing all day long.
I didn't send any questions in on a case and Lucas and Maura were sitting over there saying, is he sick?
I had to give you a call. I was like, are you okay?
No, I always look to see how big it is, first of all. We've had small ones lately.
The first one that I got just.
Yeah, it was like, oh my god.
Well, count yourselves lucky. The sanitary district board, we meet once a month, not twice, but an average packet is between a hundred and fifty and three hundred pages.
That's like school board ones. That's school boards are that way.
It involves a lot of financials, involves contracts and stuff like that, but it's a lot of reading. That's, that's a full weekend, cause those meetings are on Monday.
But you know, the city council almost always is several hundred pages if you add all their agenda items. It's printed, cause I print them out sometimes.
Okay, so we're finished.
I, well, hold on, there's still two more.
Oh my gosh, two more items?
Your member report, now I already talked about the general plan update stuff.
Talk to us one more minute, I don't know after whether we're gonna get anything more than we used to get after the conversation we just had, but also knowing, if you don't make it to a city council meeting.
Microphone?
Oh, yeah, put your, yeah.
If you don't make it to a city council meeting, you don't know what happened. Is there any way for the stuff that we're, that we've done work on, if the city council goes?
On, if you go to the city website and go to city council, there's agendas and minutes and videos.
Oh, I know. Oh, I know that.
Yeah, so if you don't see it live.
If it was a four-hour meeting and you couldn't see it live, which happened to be the case, um, and, you know, I, I suppose you could scroll ahead and just sort of see the, but, you know, it'd be nice if.
So, um, what, back when we had the formula business, because we were brand new and, um, I was like, what is this thing? What, you know, what's going on? So I went back and looked at the minutes first and the agendas for all the times it was discussed before. But the minutes were so miniscule. There would be, there would be a.
Their action minutes, yeah.
There would be a vote and there would be three, two, you didn't even know why. There would be a vote and there would be three, two, you didn't even know why people had voted the way they did. And then there would be public input, they'd just list the names. Now, I've gone back, years back, like in twenty sixteen and stuff, they actually had what each, a summary of what each person said. So, the minutes were actually useful to understand what was going on. But I, you know, personally, I wish we had a little more substance to our minutes, so someone could read that and say, "Oh, okay, that person spoke on this," and- But, you know, you could not tell what the, what the ci- the city council members' positions were, except for the vote.
Right.
Well, you, you have to watch the video.
You have to, I guess, by the way, you can get transcripts.
Yes, yes, you can.
There are transcripts of the meetings?
You can get that.
So, if you go down the bottom of YouTube, there's a little three dots, you click on it, up on the right, the transcript's done. If you do, and I just like, copy it, and I zip it onto a Word file, and then I, now, the trouble, trouble is, you don't always know the names, so sometimes you have to go through the video, okay, "She spoke at this time," 'cause the times are timestamped. It may take you fifteen minutes.
This was his words and these were her words, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not as hard with the, a public hearing, 'cause the names are announced. But when the city council member get talking, they can be going back and forth, you're like, "Who, who said what?" But it's, you know, if you, if you really wanted to get it, I use it for other purposes, but, uh, uh, it is, I found this incredibly, actually, it was Gail that told me about it, I didn't know that you could do that. She explained to me how you could get transcripts for all these things.
Natalie told me.
Yeah.
That's what he does.
You didn't know, yeah?
Didn't know about that either.
It's useful, like, if you're gonna write something about what went on, that you actually have the words that the person actually said. And now you don't have to listen to, 'cause I used to sit there and listen to the videos and be taking notes, you know? That's not particularly, uh, a good one.
That's, that's great.
But I don't know if you wanna put that much work into it.
Yeah, you have to be motivated.
More comments, sir?
I think I've said enough tonight.
All right, well, there being no other obvious business before the commission, at nine thirty-three, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
What about our liaison, liaison?
Liaison.
He spoke before he left.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Well, that's right, he, he did consider that.
So, he was substituted for Betsy?
No, it's quarterly.